Call the Select Meeting to Order at 7:00. Chief Mantella, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second and we approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dean, a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December 9th.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second and we approve the minutes of December 9th. Any discussion?
On the minutes? Yeah, I've got a few.
Go for it.
Citizens comments.
Was that Rob Steele or Rob's voting?
I second Allison.
Thank you.
Rob Steele's talking now.
Citizens comments, 1, 2, 3, 4th line down, it says, "And where he believes it is at, no." I believe that should be "now." And the last sentence on that paragraph has no punctuation at the end. And then, "Review bids to remove tree at 445 Main Street." M. Jones stated they got a second bid of $5,500 from Black Bear. Wasn't the $5,500 from McCullough? Or am I?
It was from McCullough.
It was, okay. I don't know where I had that. And then, on discussion about mowing bids, we did talk about that a little bit, and I had talked to Cuttin' his suite, and he said that should the, should what he's doing change, he's gonna have to update his bid. So, we need to put something in there for that.
So, if we remove Dewey Field from his list?
His bid is gonna change.
It is.
Correct.
Okay.
We did talk about that last week.
Okay.
And that was all I had.
All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Citizens comments, items not on the agenda. Anybody on Zoom, Mike?
Anybody on Zoom have anything you wanted to bring up to the Select Board that's not on the agenda?
And we're gonna move on to Police Department update. Chief Mantella?
We're really doing good, yeah. Stop it!
Better knock on that, knock on yours.
Mary Lee, hit him. Just hit him.
All right, good evening, Board. Let's go through the calls to service. The total, we are up like 32. Obviously, we have two items to increase, some DPs, some fingerprints. We did our more property watches. We also had seven. Sex, federal, mystery check, you should do a reporter. We have more traffic stops. Anything, anything, questions on the calls? Nothing? All right, rest. We did all three. We did seven in November. You can see what they were in November. Nothing really stands out. Any questions on those? Okay. Good. Bob?
We don't wanna be here till 11:00 at night.
Traffic violations, if you go down there, we did do, we did increase by four. We had to hit Route 30 a little bit more. You see a lot more winter traffic coming down from Warren to here.
From where, B?
From Warren, so. I got off the interstate here and headed right up that way, Route 30. Yeah. It's kind of a, I've ridden that on my motorcycle. It's a nice ride, but the winter, I wouldn't want to do it.
Well, going to Warren, Vermont?
Yeah. That way. Any questions on those?
Yeah, why are the speeds up in November? You'd think they would be in the better weather. October, it'd be faster, but...
You know, I don't know. It's very seasonal. I mean, we did do a campaign for Thanksgiving. They had a campaign, we got a campaign coming up, likely this week, first of this week. So, you see a lot more people out there. I don't know, I think it's just people traveling. I think in November, people are moving and grooving, going on, you know, Thanksgiving, stuff like that. No more questions than that. Call service in Castleton, we actually had zero in November. Why? I don't know. Backups that we provided, six, same as last month, you see four to Perry even, and two in Poltony. Any questions on the, on the backup stuff? Understand we back up, really, towns that order us. Nothing beyond that. What, what, you know, what's reasonable? Officers need help with another agency. All right, let's kinda go through the notes. So, we did have an actual firebomb that happened up on Eaton Hill West, or East, where someone made a mall top cocktail, threw it out a vehicle up there, started a fire. Nobody got hurt. ATF was involved. They got evidence. Haven't heard anything back from the lab. Possible suspects, but really, this could depend on if any DNA comes back on that stuff, which I doubt is a possibility.
It was in a parked vehicle in somebody's driveway, and they threw it at a parked vehicle? It wasn't going down the road or anything?
No, no. It was targeted.
Yeah.
It was targeted toward an individual.
Okay.
I mean, it sounds worse than it is, but top cocktails, something you don't see every day. So, someone had to have some thought and had some issues with this particular person.
Yep.
I guess so.
Noise complaints, haven't been too bad. They did make one arrest. So, if you go back to the arrest, the noise in the nighttime, so that's actually a criminal citation. That's usually, we give that to a house that we've already civilly given them tickets to, kinda like the three-strike rule. I'm going down the list here. We got the highway safety, that's at Thanksgiving. We did, we did get that money, I know, but has not been, agreement has not been signed yet. Once we get that signed, 100% cost, possibly get one or two full hundred speed displays. I know I've said that to you before, but when we work with federal grants, and they have to sign things, it can take a little bit. So, we have not seen, we've been awarded it, we just need the agreement, so it's signed, so that now it's ours, and we can spend it. Of course, the turkey trap, we talked about, which was good. I know Justin and Ed helped with that. I think that's gonna be a big thing in the future, really good. And then, we covered that. Castle cares, we did do Thanksgiving, we just did a Christmas one, although that'll show up in the December. But, we just did a food boxes on Friday night for that 30. And I think that's it? Well, a lot has happened in December, and I'm not gonna ruin December's rapport, so we'll leave that for next month. Are there any other questions you wanna ask me about?
Good job.
Anything for the Board? Roy, you have a question?
Oh, one question on the, on the other, on that incident.
Which incident?
The one that would be alcohol, tobacco, and fire.
Yes.
That you called. Did, were you able to, or did you have to, or how many did you call in? State police?
Nope. Anything with, that's considered a bomb, we always call ATF. So, they came over, went over. Took a while to get here, but they came to them.
So, they were the only, you didn't call any of the other departments?
No. I mean, if it, if it obviously got worse to where people were seriously injured, or possibly death, that would've been a whole different story. Good?
Good, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, your work.
Moving on, let's talk about a tree at 445 Main Street. It'll open us up for Board discussion. Rob, you had an idea?
I did have an idea. I didn't know if we could, and the only reason I would be even thinking about this is I, I do believe that Scott Welch was probably right, that the old tree warden did do it on his own time, but we can't prove that. And he was a tree warden at the time. So, I believe that we, we probably should help out, only because it can't be disputed one way or another, that he didn't do it on their time. So, my thought was, if we could get a bid, get a bid on just getting the tree on the ground, and then use our guys to clean it up. I mean, it's probably not the greatest of wood, but we could burn it at the town garage too, so that would be my idea on that.
Do you, do you know what that quote, we got, we got a quote of $5,500. Do you know?
That was to do the whole job.
Clean it all up and everything?
As far as, as far as I know, right?
Minus stumping.
Minus the stump.
Oh, wow. So, it could be considerably less if they just take it down and leave it.
Just put it on the ground.
Yeah, yeah. We need to look into that.
So, that's my thought on that.
The only question I have is, that's a rather large tree, and there's gonna be a lot of debris from it. And it is white poplar, which is pretty much useless for firewood. So, what's it gonna cost the town to pick that tree up and take it away? They would have to dump it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get the excavator down there.
I don't think it's worth anything for firewood. That's my opinion, white poplar.
Even, even an outside furnace?
Eh, maybe you could burn it in that.
Yeah, that's what we burned it in out there.
Yeah, I mean, also, that tree is, what, four and a half feet in diameter? I don't know how you split that, but...
Especially if it's hollow.
I mean, you could split it, but the labor would be far out.
That's why I'm thinking it might be more cost-effective, just to split the cost with the owner, which has been proposed. And it might cost us less in the long run. Now, the only concern I have is the one that I think some other Board members have mentioned, is that, are we setting a precedent? And I'm gonna say that, in my opinion, it's yes and no. I mean, only because this was alleged to be on town property for decades. And the homeowners that it's adjacent to, and that currently most likely own the tree, thought that. The town government, at some point in time, thought that. So, for us to just say all of a sudden, "Nope, it's not our problem," just doesn't feel right to me.
Thank you, Dave.
I, but once again, if somebody, myself included, have that big old silver maple in the front yard, and I, that needs to come down eventually. It's in the town right of way, I think, but I'm not gonna see if I can get the town to take it down. That's not their problem, in my opinion. I let the tree grow. So, I've had my two cents, and the rest of the work can chime in with what they think now.
I appreciate you saying that, 'cause I think it's the right thing to do to take it down. Mine is not as extensive as your thing, but it's the right thing to do. And if they're gonna share half the cost, I think we need to do it. I really do.
No, if, we have that in the budget, right? Yes. I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
Right now, I think the tree warden's budget's $6,700. It was in my report, I believe. And that's gonna cost us $27.50 or, or $28.50.
And my understanding is, if we do that, the town crew does nothing? Very little?
I was saying nothing.
Oh, yeah, if you, if you pay the $5,500?
Yeah, the town crew is not involved?
Does anybody have the old, any email, or anything that was in the old one? Jeff's not on. Jeff talked to him, I just wanna make sure I'm not...
Or minimal, I mean, you know, it's not, we're gonna be, not gonna be down there with an excavator, dump trucks, and the town crew cleaning up stuff, right?
That's what I'm trying to say. I don't, I don't have that in front of me, so I want, I don't wanna say 100% that that was what they negotiated, was they take everything away? Or did he say, "Late on the ground, we pick it up"? I don't recall.
What about the stump?
The stump would stay in the ground. We wouldn't, 'cause if we tore that stump out of there, it'd create, obviously create a big hole, and we'd have to fix that. Or we could grind it, which those, that's a big stump to grind on, 'cause usually, they do it with a, on the front end of a skid steer.
It's not gonna be a safety hazard if it's just a stump, and that's their concern, so...
You just put a big old tractor tire on it, fill it with dirt and flowers. That's what I've got in my yard.
Not even close to the only one around here.
Can you find that out, Mr. Town Member? If the $5,500 includes...
If you wanna come back to this, I can actually text Jeff and see if he's, I thought he was in the other meeting, but I can find out.
Well, if we wanted to approve it, if we all agreed on it, we could just make a motion to approve that Black Bear take the tree down for $5,500, if the town has no obligation to do any cleanup. And then, we wouldn't have to come back to it if that was the case.
I'm not opposed to that, if somebody wants to make a motion.
Go ahead, Rob.
Mark, do you wanna weigh in on this before we...
I think you know how I feel.
Okay.
I like the laymies, and I understand the situation they're in, but this is not on town property. I don't see anywhere that the town took the position that it was. You know, there seems to be hearsay that goes back 25 years. We do know for sure that Jeff Freeman, in the, when he was serving in the capacity as tree warden, took a limb down. We don't know if he did that because he thought it was on town property, or just because this was a significant tree. The UVM Extension Agency had this listed as, I think, the third largest poplar in the state of Vermont. And Jeff was, you know, really into that.
He did a lot of that, 'cause we had the largest burrow, and then we got beat out. Someone up north got out. Is Jeff Freeman still alive?
He's in a, yes, he's, yes, he is.
Has he, does he have his mind?
That I can't speak to. He's in, he's in a care home right now.
So, you don't know if we could ask him, and he would remember?
But either way, whether he thought it was, or whether he thought it wasn't, if he thought it was, he was wrong. You know, it's, it's not on town property.
But he might just say, "Well, I did it to make it look better. I did it as a friend."
And I feel bad for the laymies, saying, "Hey, I think that you should incur this expense." But there's a lot of really big trees that are the same distance just off town property, and I'm afraid that we're gonna create a precedent there. You know, I've talked to a lot of people that live in that same area, that said, "Yeah, we're aware of that tree, you know, this has been an issue for a while, but I don't think it's on town property." And, and some of those neighbors have big trees too, and I'm just nervous about what level of responsibility we're signing the town up for.
I, I would agree with you 100% on that, if the tree warden hadn't touched that tree. Now, like I said, we can't combat it either way, whether, so I would agree 100%. I don't know how many of those other trees down through there, the tree warden cut branches on, on his own time or not, but I think that's, that's where the holdup is there.
I get that, but to me, if, if 25 years ago, when Charlie Perry was the town road foreman, if he stopped at Tom's Bait and put the plow down and cleared your driveway for you, 'cause your snow blower was broken, I don't think that that would instill a lifelong responsibility for the town to clear your driveway. You know, I think probably a lot of those things happened over the year, you know, a little, over the years, kindnesses have been done. But I don't think that necessarily means that the town has an obligation. I'm just gonna, I don't know how we're gonna react when another homeowner comes in with a similar situation.
I'm inclined to agree with the fact that you don't wanna set a precedent, or you'd be in big trouble.
The tree you talked about...
Is or isn't? Is it on town, or isn't it? And if it definitely isn't, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be taking it down.
You know, with the town right of way, the, even though the town has a right of way, the person that owns the property, in, in the situation that you were talking about, the person that owns the property still has the responsibility to keep that right of way accessible. I ran a follow this years ago. I had a house in Poltony, an apartment house, and I had a big tree that fell across a driveway. A person behind this house had a circular driveway, had a right of way to cross my lawn. And they called me up, it was a big poplar like this, and said, "Hey, you gotta get that clear." And I said, "I will, I'm gonna get it cut over the next month." And the woman said, "I want it cut right of way." And she had an attorney call me, and he had all the statutes. I had to get it cleared in 48 hours. It was my property, my tree, but she had a right of way through my property, and it was my responsibility to maintain the right of way. But that's kind of a separate topic, really. I'm just, I'm concerned about this, and I'm worried about the precedent that we would
I'm not only because of the gray area that existed in this case. Whereas, a tree 100 yards down the road, that has never been alleged to be on town property, and is three feet off the border, if that dies, I will agree with you 100%. It's not our problem.
And I get that.
The only reason, the only reason I'm, I'm leaning the way I am, is because this is a gray area. So, instead of painting it black or white, I'm choosing to suggest we paint it gray.
And that's how the Board's supposed to work, right? We debate something, and sometimes we agree unanimously, and sometimes we don't, and...
Believe me, I'm not totally comfortable with the decision that I'm going to make when this vote is called.
Yeah, I get that.
But I'm gonna do it anyways, because sometimes the right thing to do doesn't taste good, but you gotta do it.
It's not clear cut, for sure.
So, any more discussion? Is there, did we make a motion? We didn't actually make a motion, did we?
No.
If someone is going to, then now is the time.
You want me to make a motion?
Go ahead, Bob.
Make a motion that we expend the $5,500 to take down the tree at 445 Main Street in Castleton?
Just put the cost with them.
We'll split the cost with the homeowner.
Yeah, that was a part of the motion.
Yes, yes. We'll split the, the, the homeowner agreed to split the cost 50%.
As long as the town doesn't have to do any labor.
That has to be found out, yes. As long as the tree company takes care of the whole tree.
So, minus the stump.
If the tree company comes back and says, "No, that it was only to drop it on the ground, and you guys pick it up," does that change?
Uh-huh. That does change it, yes.
So, I'll be coming back to you.
So, this motion is contingent on the town not having to put any labor into it?
That's correct.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Maybe, what was it, $5,500?
That's what, yeah.
Maybe the motion should be that the town contributes $27.50 towards the cost.
I see where you're going with this.
And then, no matter what it is, there's no more obligation.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, we don't have to come back.
That's the max we're doing, is $27.50, end of story.
If they say, "No, that $5,500 is to take half of it down," then the laymies will have to, would have to decide.
If they wanna do the rest of it. Good one, Mark.
So, if you rescind your motion, and start over, Bob? That's why I wanted you to do it, Rob.
And they would have the responsibility of contacting the tree company and all the arrangements. The town would just, if this motion passes, the town would just have to write the check.
So, I'll rescind my motion and start again. Okay.
I'm gonna do it, Bob.
Yeah, go for it, Rob, 'cause you got it all down pat there.
I would make a motion that the town approve the $27.50 to cut, towards cutting the tree down at 445 Main Street.
Did we wanna say about the homeowner picking up the rest?
No, we're just, we're giving $27.50 as our cut. Doesn't matter who pays the rest, we're only paying $27.50.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
You can say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes, 3 to 2. We're gonna move on, we're gonna talk about...
All right, who was the second? No.
Mary Lee Harris and Mark Brown voted no.
Thank you.
Maintaining private roads. Mike, you wanna kick this off?
So, recently, in the last, last week, I mean, recently, Jeff had mentioned to me that, that the trench had been redug in the road, and the resident of the road, I believe, is here, and has seen that, or witnessed that, who was cutting, who was cutting the trench across the road. Of course, that doesn't affect the person that's cutting the trench, because they live on the, we'll say, south side, or they don't have to drive through that trench. So, I did, Dick was up near the state park, and so he drove over and actually looked at it as well. So, the work that gets done up there ends up, the road gets cut into, if we say anything, we're told, "Private road, you can't do it, we can't do anything about it." It'd be really expensive to bring that road up to, to minimum Class III standards, due to the, the fact that it's narrow, and there's, there is, or mound systems, there's trees, there's utility poles, there's other structures that are, would probably not allow it to be brought up to Class III standards, so that we would, if it was a Class III standards, the only reason I mention that is, that's the minimum that we would get money to help maintain from the state. It's not gonna be a lot of money, it's not gonna fix every problem up there by any means. But it would allow us that we can get up there, we can, we have some control, we can maintain the, the property the right of way, or the road, the right of way, and not have to argue with residents up there, what we can and can't do to, to properly maintain the road. And when I say properly maintain, I'm not talking just plowing the winter, I'm talking about drainage and ditching and everything in the summer as well.
And grading, and...
Yeah. It's, it's a tight, it's a tight fit up through there with a grader, and with a truck with a wing on it, and so, it's, it's really difficult to properly maintain it, when you have people that are cutting trenches across it, and draining water where they want to go. It's not, it's not how we do business.
Well, I went up through there, and to be fair to everyone, I didn't go very fast, because it was in the middle of a snowstorm. So, I was only doing about 10 miles an hour, but the dip was, the ditch was there, it's about maybe six inches wide, and four deep or so, maybe a little wider, maybe a little deeper, it's hard to tell. I didn't get out and look at it, but it was there, no question about it, and it would be a problem for us no love, I think. Do you agree with that, Mike?
I do. And everybody hitting it with their car.
So, what I would suggest, and what I, in the conversation I was having with Mike, I was on the phone with Mike at the time I was driving that road, and I, I think that we should put the effort into finding out just where our responsibility ends, and then end our responsibility there.
Do we have other private roads that we're gonna have the same problem with?
There's two more, right?
There's two more not having the problems with it. Higgins Road up is the first, when you turn off from Hubbard Road onto the lower end of Frisbee Hill, south end of it, Higgins Road is at first left, and then Gump Road, everyone knows, probably knows where that is, across, almost across from the Dollar General. And the reason that we go up that road is because there's sewer infrastructure out there, so we have to get to that to maintain it. My concern with that is, it's a handshake deal, 'cause no one has an easement written that says we have an easement through that, through, back then was Andy Graziano's property. So, if anybody at one point throws their hands up and says, "You can't come down here," we're just gonna be in a battle with someone to be able to get access to our sewer infrastructure. They did, so that's why the town made some, somebody at the time, whether it was a highway foreman, or if it was a select board, that we plow that road, so we have, and in turn, we get access to the sewer infrastructure. And I don't really know the history on Higgins, besides what Heath Goyette mentioned here, is that there was a younger, a child, or whoever had special needs down in that area, so there's something that had to do with that, but that was a long while ago. And we still maintain it. I don't, I don't believe that the condition still exists.
Can we look into getting an easement to get to that?
I think we should. I certainly can, can and should do that, so that we know that we have unrestricted access to our sewer infrastructure.
I would suggest that we look at all three of these as separate entities.
Yeah.
So, the first one that seems to be, needs to be addressed soonest would be the Cedar Mountain Road. Are we going to continue to plow and grade that, or not? And I just voiced... And I just voiced my opinion, um, and the board is welcome to share with me their opinions as well. But if we do that, we need to get an attorney involved and we, I would suggest we start with, uh, John Burke because he originally came up with one of the two, two opinions on where our responsibility ends. So he might be able to provide us with where to start. And then the other two issues, we need to address separately. We can't come up with just a blanket statement saying we're not gonna do this or we are gonna do this. We have to make sure we know the history of why we're doing Higgins Road. And if that history is no longer applies, then we may just choose not to do that, or reach an agreement with the current owners. And as far as Gump Road, I think we need to get an easement, and if we need to continue to maintain that road and return for that easement, then so be it. But we need to get that agreement in writing. Those, that's my, my opinion, so I'm opening up the board. Mark, you.
On Cedar Mountain Road, there were two different opinions on where the town road ended, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is one of them on the close side and the other on the far side of Blue Bell?
Goldfinch?
Goldfinch.
Yellowfinch.
I believe that was what we had talked about the last time.
I believe that's correct, Mark.
Yes, that's correct.
It would seem like we're gonna need to turn the plow around.
Yes, that's the problem.
We need a place to put the snow.
So we could plow up to that road, back up it to turn around, and then back up whatever it is, twenty yards, and plow out. Right?
But I think we need to make the determination of where our responsibility is.
Where that is, yep.
Get that documented legally and then go forward.
I would agree with you with Gump Road. And then, what's the name of the other one?
I think it's Higgins Road.
Now, I drove out there when we first discussed this. So it seems like the very beginning of that is a town road, is that correct, to the first house?
Not, not on our, not on our sheets, not on our town road sheets.
Okay. It seemed, that was a couple of months ago, I thought like the first hundred feet were paved.
It is paved, yeah.
So then it has to be a town road, right?
Or maybe we paved where...
We paved it 'cause it's on a slope, on a hill there, who knows? Heath would probably be the one that had to answer, or maybe Paul E.
But I agree, if we, if that's not a town road, we shouldn't pave it, plow it or maintain it.
I think we need to know the history before we
Yep.
Come up with any course of action on that one. So I think there are three separate issues here, is my opinion.
Okay, going back to Cedar Mountain. I remember, I haven't been out there in a long time. You go a certain, and then there's a V, does it not? Goes off to a different direction.
That's Avalon Beach Road, I think you're thinking of.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Avalon D's when you get out there.
Okay, I meant, I'm in the wrong road.
The next, next one up.
Cedar Mountain Road is the one just after the State Park.
Ends out at the old slate dump.
Okay, that's where I am, is near the State Park. And it goes out the way around, right?
Yep, and then there's a, there's a, you could call it a V or you could call it a left-hand turn, Goldfinch.
But that's pretty new.
Goldfinch or Yellowfinch?
Yellowfinch.
Yellowfinch, yeah.
So, so where's this ditch, before or after that Goldfincher, whatever?
After.
It's after it.
Almost to the end of the road.
Yeah, about, um, about halfway between Yellowfinch and the end of the road.
There used to be a town road that ran
It's right around...
Lemys property, and that's, I was talking to Dick about it, and like, that was where one of the, the opinions from the attorney thought it would, where it stopped, town road stopped, which I thought would make sense because once you turned up that old town road, anything beyond it was private property. But that road has since been reclaimed, you know, you can't drive over it anymore. You could, I guess, but not easily. Um, but that made sense to me, I'm like, 'cause the town, it used to come around behind Lemys on the backside of that slate dump and back onto Cedar Mountain Road. But I don't, I have to talk to Jim Lemey, he remembers who the other attorney was. I can't remember if it was Cranston Howe or if it was, uh, who it was at the time, but I know that, uh, John Burke was one of them.
Well, I do know in any case, we should not just stop taking care of it right now. Because this is the wrong time of the year to, if we've been historically plowing the road and taking, and keeping it open in the winter, now is not the time to stop doing that.
No, but we need to figure it out.
But in the spring, we could say, next winter, you need to make other arrangements and give the residents time to deal with it. If we decide to do that.
Well, it's a problem the highway department has addressed and we owe it to them to find resolution.
Have we talked to the landowner recently about filling that ditch in and leaving it filled in for the winter? So we're not hitting it with the plow?
I know Jeff's talked to him, I don't know what the, how long ago it was. 'Cause I talked to Barb Alzander, who lives in that area too, um, 'cause she was having problems with her culvert and she said the town put the culvert in and it's clogged and not taking, um, water very well, so again, it goes back to, did we put it in or did we not put it in, you know, it's, 'cause it's on, out there on private road. And I think, you know, if we did put it in, our policy is that we, we replace it and maintain it, but without having records...
Is this on Goldfinch lane?
No, on Cedar Mountain. Out past where they, uh, they're cutting the trench in the road, or in that regional area.
So once again, I don't expect us to resolve this tonight, I'm just trying to come up with a course of action that we can proceed with to try to resolve this.
So do we need to make a motion to ask the town manager to have an attorney?
I don't know if we need to actually make a motion or just direct them to do so.
I may have known, so I'll, I'll, I'll start with John Burke and then I'll talk to Jim Lemey to find out who the other attorney was.
I mean, I think we've asked all, anybody else that wants their road to be maintained, that it be brought up to a class-three, right?
Yeah, Piantac was one that was class-four and we, we said if you wanted to bring it up to class-three standards back when Ralph Young owned that property and the town, the town started doing something, but they started working on his property out of his permission, so they booted us off.
Yeah.
But there's property owners up there that said, hey, we'd love to have this, this road brought up to standard, said, oh, if you guys wanna get together and do it, then, you know, we'll, you bring it up to our, our standards, a V-tran standards and acceptable to the town and select board can petition or talk to the state and we get it moved to a class-three road.
I mean, I don't think that's an unacceptable request if they want it maintained to bring it up to the class-three standards, like we require everybody else to do.
I believe that's actually a town policy, isn't it?
I mean, I think that's a, that's a fair, that's a, that should be a fair shake for everybody. It gives us the right to do whatever we need to maintain the road up through there, but it also gives them the opportunity to keep it maintained by the town.
I think that would require also granting a right of way and...
Yeah, obviously, so that we can work where we need to work in that area. I, I think that's a fair, a fair compromise to all the homeowners up there.
I know that, and I, I wasn't here, so I'm not, I'm gonna, like, I don't wanna butcher the story, um, but there was an incident with attorney up there that water got, and oil got into the lake and, um, there was a lawsuit filed and there's a section of road up there that we can't change, we can't pitch it a separate way, different way, and I, I don't, I've never seen the actual paperwork, it's just been the old wives' tale between town, like, between highway workers telling me that, you know, this, there was a lawsuit over this. Kind of the same thing that happened on Marha Road.
I remember when it happened.
Yeah.
You know, and, and with the weather patterns we're having, could happen again, you know, tremendous amount of water runs off that hill, all wants to go to the lake.
Yours truly and Pete Bearhand were the two people that discovered it. We were up there, we were up there evacuating or telling everyone that they needed to leave or evacuate if they wanted to get out because flooding in the culvert and the road was not gonna be passable. And Pete Bearhand was captain or assistant chief at the time, and he looked over at me and said, "Do you smell that?", and I said, "Yeah, I do", and we went looking around and found fuel oil in the lake. Now, what happened after that, I don't know, I just know, we were there for a long time setting boobs up and trying to contain it until the proper people that know what they're doing showed up, and then we left. Anyways, um, so Cedar Mountain Road, I'm not opposed to taking that over if it's brought up to class-three standards. But if that is not going to happen, then we need to find out where our responsibility ends and that's our spot. That's, now, Bob, you, something, the wheels are turning, so if you wanna speak on this, please do. If you don't wanna say anything, that's your right.
Well, 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 no. I'd, I'd like a copy of the roads somehow, some way, 'cause I...
Town road, listening?
Yes, yes, because you just said, "We haven't taken over Piantac", did I hear you right? And I believe the town plows that.
No, we plow it, we just don't, we didn't bring it up to class-three standards.
Okay, how are we plowing it if, if it wasn't brought up to class-three standards?
Whatever, whoever's in the regime at the time would
Okay.
Keep it plowed out because the, it's a way around, it's, it's a way around to, uh,
Yeah.
You know, to get around the, um, the other side of, um,
Pond Hill Ranch.
South Street and all that.
Yep, yep, okay.
Trying to remember.
Buses and students and...
I know Clarence Decker was town, um, highway foreman at the time, and I'm thinking it was either John Dodd or Bill Maholland was town manager, and we can't ask Bill.
Charles Jacy.
Charles was... There's one other resource I can ask. I'll see if, uh, the former town accountant has any memory of that, because I remember there was some money involved and that some funding that was used.
There were cut trees on Young's property, that's what happened.
So I can, I can ask her if she has any memory of that. We, we also use stuff from the transfer station to fill in up there. I know that for a fact.
And from Birdseye Road. I think it started with a prod, to, it started with the project on Birdseye Road and maybe, uh, past the dump when Decker was here, and they were digging out the ditches that hadn't been done for years and taking trees out. And Piantac Road has a lot of stumps underneath it, that's what Decker's MO was, that they would take all that stuff and...
Use it for fill.
Yeah.
There's big, big, huge rocks and it came from the quarries that were just ginormous.
Yep. And it's very ledgy. I used to mountain bike that when it was a class-four road, you know, and big pieces of ledge, you know, that forty, fifty feet long that the road was, you couldn't go any lower.
So at this point, I think our course of action is to, to, uh, address Cedar Mountain Road first. I will ask the former town accountant, uh, would, would have any memory of the Piantac Road thing is there? But I think that's on the official town list as a road now, isn't it?
I thought it was.
Cedar Mountain's on there?
No.
Piantac.
Piantac.
Oh, Piantac, yeah, it's, but it's considered class-four.
Yeah.
So we get nothing for it?
Zero.
At any rate, I think that our priority should be Cedar Mountain Road, that's my opinion.
Agreed.
If we all agree to that?
Yes. Highway crews having a problem with, we need to address it for them.
At least get a course of action on Cedar Mountain Road, then we'll move on to the other two to see if we can resolve those.
Yep.
Anything else on maintaining private roads at this point? Mowing bids. I can drag out the paperwork for the mowing bids, I don't have it handy, but it's in here. Mark, you said that, when I spoke to you, you said that Casella's, why should I even say that?
Yep, so I think when we looked at those bids before, we were ready to approve them. And I asked you to hold up because, um, Casella Construction is interested in partnering with us to, uh, be a sponsor at Dewey Field. And I've had a couple of meetings with them and Andy Vermilier. Uh, Andy put together a great, uh, goals, timelines and community partners, I should've made copies for everyone. Casella's, uh, was rightfully concerned about taking money away from local contractors. And in our last meeting, we decided that they would not mow the field. They felt uncomfortable with that, and I can respect that.
Were they gonna do spring and fall cleanups?
So we, we don't have anything signed yet, but what I believe is going to come out is that they will, uh, participate in spring and fall cleanup and they will line the sports fields, the, uh, soccer and Little League field, uh, baseball specific maintenance every spring, uh, infield material, uh, soccer field lining, uh, grade the, uh, parking lot and create a physical separation between the parking lot and the field to prevent vehicle access, people going out and driving on the field, doing birdies. Probably with some large boulders that I believe Hattacas have agreed to donate. And then on would be, uh, remove the old play structure and install a new one, I believe there's four thousand?
No, uh, nine hundred and seventy-five.
Nine hundred and seventy-five dollars? I thought you'd put some money in the, from ARPA.
The ARPA has some stuff in there, but in the reserve, there's enough, nine seventy-five, and then there, there is money in the ARPA. Three, three or four, three or five thousand, one, one was three, like Dewey Field was five and Idol was three or vice versa.
Rebuilding the bleachers and then long-term, uh, planning for the entire acreage. You know, are we using it to its best ability, 'cause it's designed now the way it is because there used to be the horse arena and now there isn't, so how could a professional look at that and imagine what we could do there? Could we put in, uh, a kid's bicycle pump track that's a, you know, a small bike track that goes up and down, so essentially you could almost ride around it without pedaling? Picnic tables down by the river, somehow connect to the rail trail access, town signage to attract people to Dewey, some sort of picnic area offering river access. So that was, this was all in the conversation that we had with Casella's, again, it's not finalized, but, um, that's what it looks like it would entail, that they would be willing to do those things. But, and maybe even donate some money towards, uh, revamping the playground, but they, uh, don't wanna take away business from local contractors.
Then we can go forward with it.
Go forward with the bids.
Correct.
If we, if we choose to.
I could drag those out of here unless somebody else has them handy.
I don't have them in front of me, Dick.
I did bring them 'cause I didn't know we were going with this, huh?
I'll give me a few minutes, we can, we can circle back to that and I'll start digging through my, I know I've got them in there, I just don't know exactly where in that bag they are.
Yeah, I know we, well...
We only, we didn't have it.
Be competitive, any competition on any of those bids. So I think we were...
Would we have to put the price in or can we, well, I don't even know who the second bidder was, or could we just make a motion to approve the bids from Cutting It Sweet and
White Knight.
White Knight, could we do that as presented?
As submitted, yeah.
'Cause White Knight's was only, was a very small increase and, um, Brian's was the larger increase of them all, but, um, they were the, yeah, they were the only ones, we, we solicited bids and they're, they're the only two that's bid on in the last, like, four years, five years.
Been happy with their work, so...
Yeah, yeah.
So we can approve it or let it grow?
Not grow much lately, but...
Well, would it be, I don't see any reason why we can't, couldn't approve the two quotes as presented. And then you can circle back to the cost and I know that that's in the budget already.
I would make a motion to accept the two mowing bids from Cutting It Sweet and White Knight as presented.
Second?
I moved the second in to approve the mowing bids. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, Mike, you're up again, we're trying to talk about, uh, record scanning for the health officer.
Yes. So in your packet was a quote from E-Biz Docs, they're the ones that did the last work, uh, for all the zoning files. I, I met with Nick, uh, DiBenedetto, um, from E-Biz Docs and Hannah, uh, and Jim Lemey, and, uh, Jim was able to purr, from the, when the guy looked at this stuff, they measure it by how much they can fit in, uh, uh, like banker's box size, right? And Jim's files were, the whole filing cabinet was full. And so they looked at it and that's what they based the bid on, but, um, so it's the worst-case scenario. But Jim went through all of his files and purged it, and there's a lot of space now that is, it's gone. There was stuff that was taken out. But this is the company that we used before, lessons learned, um, on naming conventions or labeling. So the, the work that we would have to do upfront with Jim and Hannah and myself is to go through this process to go through every drawer, put them in boxes, add their match to the parcel files of the, um, the zoning files. Because this is septic, these are all septic issues, you know, septic systems. So that now when you reference it, you'll, when somebody's buying a home and they wanna know the history of something or the zoning administrator's looking for a history of that property, it'll all be now in one spot. So it'll either be by parcel number, you know, it will be... So it'll either be by parcel number, you know, it will be by parcel number or, uh, address. But Jim didn't, you go back to the seventies, they didn't have parcel numbers. So we have to go through every file, get an address, and then cross-reference it back to the zoning files and put it all, so it's gonna take a little bit of work, I'm, I'm saying, to get it prepared for them, but it, it will be, it'll be easily searchable once we're done. We didn't do that with the last one. They scanned it. Now you gotta do like Ctrl F and type in the address or the parcel number to find it. And we've, we had to hire someone to come in and do this work electronically. A young, young student is doing it. So when we search, it'll have parcel file and address. Now those, the health records, uh, the sewer, septic records will be with it. So, uh, based on the worst case scenario, if, um, with, uh, E-Biz Docs, which they did do good work. Wasn't their fault that we didn't have stuff properly sorted out. Uh, it's three thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars, um, based upon what, uh, we're only gonna pay for what they do. So now that it's been cleared out somewhat, well, it won't be that much, but if you, if you approve the, up to that amount, that we would get it all done, but it's certainly not gonna cost that much, cause we're probably, I think he purged like almost half of what was there. I think he went from six drawers to three is what I believe it was, so.
So two, two questions. First question is, uh, if we spend four thousand dollars, um, digitizing these records, what does that do for us?
Uh, septic, when somebody buys a house, if, what it does for us is provide a service to those that are buying property or Jim goes, when, if Jim gets done or when he's done, um, he knows his system. None of us else know how he files things and what he did. So this allows us now to quickly find things and be able to reference it and print it out and versus digging through file drawers of, this just says like nineteen seventy-two, one, two, three, four. There's no name, there's no, no.
Yeah.
So this is a record of all the private septic systems?
Correct.
He probably won't.
Is he on the eighty-nine?
No.
I am not, I think he turned ninety.
The state, so we still charge money, um, for permitting for, on septic systems because the state only goes from the house out to the tank. So when a tank gets replaced or a leach field's replaced, the state doesn't keep those records, so, but we do. So we can tell them, like, when the tank is replaced and what it is and what, if the leach field was ever failed and had to be, is redone, we have.
I think it's the other way, isn't it? The state goes from the tank to the leach field.
No, so I was, I was told the other way around, but. But either way, there, there's a missing part of, of the records that we have that the state doesn't have.
So the bottom line is we'll be able to access those records electronically. If and when our health officer ever retires.
Yeah, except right now it'd be, as, as I'm, I'm the deputy health officer and if they said go find a permit from somewhere, I'd be, I'd just be looking at drawers and going, okay, you know what year, um, you know, a name.
Is this the same company that other communities use?
They, they do a lot of work, um, for other municipalities, especially when COVID hit and the part of the CO, or the COVID money, or the ARPA money was for digitizing records and making it more accessible to the public. Uh, and for us to find records and, uh, do research. So, uh, all these companies like E-Biz Docs and others jumped on board. Cause we did, we, we talked to three companies, um, and got bids from them when we did the first one.
And they're happy with their work?
And these were the ones that, uh, we, we hired, that the board approved and, yeah, they did, they did, they did great work. It's just, we had to do our homework up front.
Should we ask them to rebid if you figure you only got half the number? Rather than saying we'll pay up to thirty-nine hundred dollars?
I, I would ask, if you look at the page number six, and they start talking about bundles and, um, boxes and stuff, well, we just have to keep track of what we give them, cause we need this, we need those back too. They don't get to keep them. So we would know what goes out the door and we would only pay for what they do. They're, they're gonna pay, you know, the, the, the transportation, no matter whether they're taking one box or two boxes, I mean, we're gonna get charged for that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so I mean, we'll save, you know, if there's six boxes, if we're cut down to three boxes, then obviously that's gonna be half, so.
Well, they're estimating fifteen thousand images at ten cents an image or ten point five.
Yeah, they've already, they've already laid out how much each image costs, so it's.
Although the last paragraph says pricing is based on the quantities listed in this proposal. If the images are more or less than ten percent of the assumed quantities, the per image price is subject to change.
But I did talk to the guy, um, Nick about it, and when he, we told him that he knocked it down to three boxes. I can go through the, I mean, this, this doesn't have to be done like tomorrow. So if you want me to have, get a rebid, I don't know how much it's gonna move the needle for us, but, um, I'll, I can do that dance.
Well, the other question is where does, where, where does this funding come from? Where does this money come from?
Um, I believe it's, if you, your ARPA list.
We already, do we've already obligated it?
Yeah, well, it's not, yes. No, no, it's out of the, um, the interest. Can you look at that, Bob, the last page of that?
Last page of this one here?
In the blue, yeah.
In the blue?
For, thing in there for, uh, digitizing, I don't know if it's in the yellow, in the green or if it's in the blue.
Uh, be under general government equipment town office? No. No, it's not under that.
It's under, it's under the blue section.
It is.
Scanning catalog and health officer records, septic system permits and town road documents.
Next to last line.
Yeah.
Health and regular.
And I, I didn't know what it was gonna be at the time. I put ten thousand one hundred in there and it's far less than that.
It's half of that, yeah.
Okay.
And I don't really think we have a, a choice to, not to get them scanned. I mean, we could have a scan and everything's at our fingertips, or we're gonna pay Mike to dig through all the boxes whenever we need it, so.
What's your pleasure, Board? Do we wanna have Mike re-quote it, or do we wanna just approve, uh, not to exceed number and go forward?
Yeah, I would agree with Mary Lee, I think, on that one.
Not a heavy lift, is it, Mike? Then do that, please.
I'm sure.
So we're gonna move on then. Unless there's other questions from the Board before we do that? So let's talk about a new, new plow truck. Um, a few meetings ago, I had asked the, uh, two of our members, that would be Mr. Spalding and Mr. Brown, to form a subcommittee and do some research, find out what our options were, because we had a lot of balls in the air and we weren't sure which one to catch. So I don't know if, uh, the two of you and the town manager have collaborated to come up with a recommendation, but if so, I'd like to hear it. Yeah, I think we, I think we have, right?
I'm getting the slipper, so I'll let you guys.
You wanna, wanna speak to it, Mark?
Sure. Um, so everybody knows, I, I think a year ago, we started with a bid on a new Freightliner before Rob and I were on the Board. And that truck was not available with the transmission that we requested, the Allison transmission. Actually, I guess the whole truck was delayed, and then we went to the Western Star, which was more money. Then the transmission we wanted was not available, and I believe the truck was delayed as well. So we were looking at getting either of those trucks. We'd have to get the Detroit transmission. And by the time we got it outfitted, we'd be looking at a year and a half away. And if we wanted to stick with the Allison transmission that our crew wanted, we don't know. So Mike looked at options from HP Fairfield, and they had three options, really. They had a truck that's in their pipeline, almost done. That has all the mechanical specs that we want, it's an International. Has a stainless steel dump box, which is a ten thousand dollar outfit, which in my opinion is well worth it. If we look at our two thousand thirteen truck right now, the thing's only got fifty-seven thousand miles on it. But the dump box is in poor condition. The elevator for the salt system is being repaired right now. And it has to all be fabricated. In the stainless steel bodies, that's a bolt-in, so it's much easier to repair. Two issues with the truck that they're quoting us on. The first one is it's white. So to keep with our fleet colors, if we went with that truck, we'd have to paint it. To send it to the right, to have it done correctly, close to ten grand. You know, they take the lights out, the windows, all the glass out of the truck, paint the jams, ten grand. You know, you certainly could have it sprayed blue for a lot, lot less, but, you know, what do you do with a almost three hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment? How? Where do you wanna go with that? This truck does have one option that we don't use. It has a, a benching or shelving wing. So if your snowbanks get too high, on this, this wing has an attachment further back in the truck. So you can raise the entire wing up in the air, go over the guardrail and push the snowbank back. We haven't had that kind of snow here in years. You know, if you go out in the Rocky Mountains, all the trucks have that. Probably not, it, it's a thirty-five hundred dollar option we'd get for free on this truck, but it's probably not anything that we need or want. If we go with a blue truck, that'll put us back three or four months. They have one that's in production, they can change the color, get it painted for the same price, except that's gonna be in twenty twenty-six, and there's about a twenty-five hundred dollar price increase. So he had originally quoted us hundred, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. I talked with Mike over there and said, you know, if you can find ten grand in that price, we'll present it, but you're too much money. You know, you're up to the price of the Western Star. So I think he took off eight or nine thousand dollars.
So the price of two seventy-five, nine eighty-one gets us a white truck?
That's the white truck with the benching wing. If we want the blue truck, we wait another few months, don't get the benching wing, and it's about twenty-five hundred dollars more.
So what would be the estimated delivery of the white truck?
Couple of weeks, right?
Couple of weeks?
Yeah, it's, I think he said January sometime, but.
Okay, so that's, that's like now, basically.
I don't have a place to put it right now.
And the blue truck would be when, Mark?
Uh, June, I believe.
Yeah, June, July, is it?
June or July?
Now, he, I did talk to him about that plow, and Jeff had wrote, wrote, and I think you had copies of it. They wanted the fixed plow, not that other, they want the OWSP nine fixed plow, which is a thirty-five hundred dollar option, I think is what you just said. I didn't ask him that. But they don't really want that one. They want the fixed one.
No, the fixed one won't cost anymore.
No, the, the one that you're saying, the other one was a thirty-five dollar, thirty-five hundred dollar option.
Yep, we would've got that for free.
Right. They just don't want it.
But they don't want it. It doesn't fit our application, really.
One more thing to work, to break?
Twenty-five years ago, probably would've been a good thing.
I can remember them doing that around here when I was a kid. Bench in the snow. I remember them doing that, at least on the state highways.
Yeah, the state plow, I think the state plows are set up like that. If you see them and the, the, on the front of the truck, there's a beam that comes up for the wing, and I think on the, the benching plows, that sticks straight up almost the height of the cab on the passenger side, and it attaches at the back. But yeah, it is, it's a, there's a lot more moving pieces to make that work that we don't need.
Yeah, that's just gonna be more hassle down the road. If we're not gonna use it, we don't need that stuff on there. I agree with that.
In the opinion of our town manager and his highway crew, do we, are we okay with waiting till June or July?
I, I said right now, no, I talked to Jeff today about it. He doesn't, either way, cause right now, um, we don't have enough drivers to put in it that are qualified. We won't have it, drivers till just after the winter ends. So waiting is not gonna cause us some, some heartburn right now.
And it's a year newer truck, right? It's a twenty-six versus a twenty-five?
It's twenty-five hundred dollars more, but, uh, it would be blue, it would be, it would be a newer model.
And it doesn't have the add-on wing thing that's gonna cause problems down the road that we're not using.
Well, we had a choice of that one anyway. It, it, his email said, if you didn't want that one, you could have the other one. You get to pick. Um, but the, the guy, so the guys asked, or at least Jeff did, said that, just get the fixed one.
So what's your recommendation, Mark, about?
I, I had a couple of questions, or at least one question. This price here, what, what warranty option does that include, Mike? Cause this has war, warranty options.
You gotta add, you gotta pick and choose. There's like, it's like a little menu on that sheet I just handed out.
Yeah.
I asked them to put the shoe, the stainless steel toolbox and the vibrator for the bed in there. And that's like a two thousand dollars extra. So the base mo, the base price of the truck was set one hundred seventy-five thousand or something. And then you gotta pick the other stuff to add to it.
So.
And they would undercoat this for no additional charge?
How's that gonna change the price, though?
Well, if you go the ten year, or the seven year option, it was an add, it's, I forgot, I'm looking at.
Hundred thousand six hundred.
Yeah, and then, so you have to, you have to pick that, add it to the base price, and you have to pick the, um, uh, if you wanna add, I'm trying to see where we put it on here. I lost my, um, the, uh, we added the, uh, other options that the guys wanted for the side summer shoe and the stainless steel toolbox. The prices are there, so we're gonna have to do a little math based on what you decide. And we, whatever it is, we add to the base price of the truck.
So I think what we're realistically looking at is that two seventy-five, nine eighty-one plus twenty-five hundred dollars because we'd be getting a truck next year.
Yeah.
So, and then for the summer chute and the vibrator, is it two thousand?
I'm looking at, I think it was two thousand, so it's, uh, it's shorter. So it's, let's see, that's four hundred, thousand, one thousand fifty, thousand, eighteen hundred dollars for all three of them.
So two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Plus.
Plus if you wanna add a warranty on?
Yeah, the warranties are ten thousand six hundred, for the seven years, ten thousand six hundred, ten thousand six hundred dollars.
Do we wanna do the, the seven-year warranty on the transmission too for another eighteen hundred?
Where's that one?
It's at the bottom, eighty-four months transmission warranty, three-year standard of warranty is for an additional four years.
Yeah, the new one I just handed out to you, it's on the last page. It's at the first three pages. We have five-year hundred thousand drivetrain for eighty-four months transmission warranty. Three-year standard warranty is for an additional four years at eighteen hundred dollars. So then we can drop that with, after three years, if there's an issue with the transmission, then we, it would be out of warranty at that point, that's all. And I, and I haven't even talked to you guys about the, um, the financing part of it, cause I got the numbers. The only way that I can make it work monetarily or financially is to go for the seven-year term. I got it all written down here, but that keeps the payment down to what, what's in our budget. If it, if we go five years on it, if it.
Was this more than the truck that we, you guys had already approved?
The Western Star?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't remember on the Western Star, if, all the ads that get put onto it and everything else. I don't remember what the total was.
It's about the same.
I think it was two eighty-three, wasn't it?
Pardon me?
Wasn't the Western Star two eighty-three?
I think so.
Remember that, right?
The International should be, for lower, ten or twelve thousand dollars less than a Western Star.
But you can't get a Western Star?
Two years from now.
Yeah, but.
Maybe.
Now, these guys do have a Western Star, right there. They could put this same truck together as a white Western Star for ten thousand dollars more. And that would give you, you'd sit up higher and you'd have heated and air-conditioned seats. You know, the Western Star is.
Yeah, the Cadillac.
Alboy Cadillac.
Yeah.
And it would be white. So if we wanted a blue Western Star, it would be about two ninety-four. So in my opinion, the blue International, which would be two eighty because we'd be the two seventy-five plus twenty-five hundred, plus a couple thousand dollars for the options that Jeff wanted. The, uh, vibrator. The vibrator, the toolbox, and the summer chute.
What's your opinion on the warranties, Mark?
We have a truck that's 11 years old with 50,000 mi, 57,000 miles on it. The, this new International motor, the industry standards expect a million 200,000 out of it. You know, we're doing 5,000 miles a year.
So the risk is pretty low.
Does it come with any warranty to begin with? Or absolutely nothing?
Standard.
It's a three-year standard, right?
Navistar. I believe so, let me just double check that.
If you want an additional four years, that's when you add the 1,800. I don't think that's necessary, if it's the Allison transmission.
Well, that's on the transmission, like I meant on the engine, that $10,600 one.
Mark just gave his opinion on that.
It's a lot of money, I mean, I wish I could see. I wish I could see what we've spent, how much warranty work we've had done on our trucks.
Not a lot. Mostly electric is what we've had issues with. I just added that, I got 290,881 dollars.
The standard transmission warranty is 60 months. 750,000 miles. We're not going to see, I mean, that's road tractor mileage, you know, you're doing a buck fifty a year.
Yeah. What did it say, 60, was it 60?
Says 60 months, that's five years, right?
So your recommendation is blue International? Without that?
You agree with that?
I agree with that one 100%, yeah.
You're rolling the dice, I mean, certainly something could happen. But this stuff is super reliable today.
Mark, I'm going to yield to you and Bob's better judgment, because I'm not a truck guy, I don't know enough about these to. To have an opinion that could dispute anything you present. So my, you know, tell me what you recommend and what you think we should take for action.
I would recommend that we buy the blue International from HP Fairfield. I would recommend that we add the options that Jeff wanted, the vibrator, the stainless steel toolbox, and the summer chute. Those guys wanted a barn door option, so you can dump brush. You can add it. You know, they sell a kit to convert your tailgate to a barn door. So it swings open on a side hinge. I think the kits are like $2,500, and there's probably. I'm really guessing here, three, four thousand dollars for somebody like Terry Marsh to put it together, to weld it. And, and if you load it up with brush, to dump it, it makes it easier. I don't know how often that happens, I'm guessing not, not that much. For the times you would do that, I think it would be money ahead to say. Just take the excavator and lower the tailgate down and, on a chain, and it is what it is.
I agree with you 100%.
What, what numbers you guys use, are you saying no warranty, or additional warranty, or no?
You had a $10,000 in for the warranty, didn't you, Mark?
Well, if, if you have the $10,600 for the seven-year 100,000 mile warranty, it brings the total to 290,861. If you reduce it to a five-year 100,000 unlimited hours, then it would drop it another, almost half, or not half, but. It's 5860 dollars, I can do the math and tell you what that would equal.
But I'm pretty sure International gives us five years.
This is, what's it, five-year 100,000 unlimited hours after treatment combination plan. And then five-year 100,000 motor driveline components add additional 1,100.
Is that after the initial warranty expires?
It says it for the 84-month transmission one, but it doesn't say it up in the above one. It says after treatment combination plan. What is the treatment combination?
So we got, we got, we still got questions here, guys.
Yeah, I mean, there's got to be some kind of factory warranty that comes with these things, they're not going to just say, okay, here's your truck, if you'd like a warranty, it's 10,000.
Here it is, 12 months unlimited bumper-to-bumper. The A26 engine, 24 months unlimited miles, so. Two years unlimited miles, it's, the miles are a moot point for us. Rear axle over, greater than 52,000 pounds, that's what this truck is, 12 months unlimited miles. 60 months cab, structure, and corrosion.
Now, didn't, didn't we talk, Mike, about replacing this truck every five years? Five to seven years?
Seven, well, I was talking with Mark too, about. We got a 2013 right now, so if we could stretch those trucks out to, to 10 years. We're going to lose some trade value, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're just keeping them longer, but it, it would certainly take that, that vehicle replacement schedule and change it. So that it wouldn't be as much, because you'd have longer, greater time in between the replacement.
So I'm going to ask you again, Mark, what's your recommendations? And are you ready to make a motion?
Yes.
Then please make your motion.
I would make a motion that we order. The new International as specked in this quote. To be custom-built in blue. With the added options of the vibrator and the summer chute, and the stainless steel toolbox. From HP Fairfield. We don't have an exact price for approximately $280,000. Without the warranties.
Without the warranty and those three items, it's 280,261 dollars. That's add, that's with the three add-ons to the base price. And I got, and the 2,500 for the extra, the ordering it from them.
Yep.
So what did you got for a number, Mike?
280,261, I'm going to look at that, I'm going to make sure it's correct.
Your motion was approximately 280? Is that legal, could we do that, Mike?
I'm sorry, I was just.
Can we do? Just amend the motion to the exact number.
Let's amend the motion to the exact number, Mark.
Okay, let me start over, I make a motion.
If we have to readjust that, the next meeting, we can do that.
That we buy the new International truck in blue. From HP Fairfield with the options requested by the highway department. For 280,281 dollars.
I'll second it. Been moved and seconded.
Oh, go ahead.
It's been moved and seconded that we purchase a International truck from HP Fairfield. Any more discussion? Mark?
Does anybody have any discussion about the warranty? I know that. That's a big move.
I think if we're going to find out anything's wrong with it, we're going to find out right away. If it's a manufacturing issue or something like that, so.
Anytime I ever have anything break, it's not covered by warranty. Right?
I've never owned a vehicle that has a warranty, so I guess we'll put it that way.
At my business, we sell warranties, because people want them, it's the most profitable thing that we sell.
If you, I'll throw a number at you, if you, if you put the five-year warranty up to seven, it's 286,141. I don't know where that stands against the other trucks that we're looking at previously.
Well, Mark's already made a motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any more discussion on that motion?
I'm just going to say, I'm not on the select board, but I, I think it's a mistake not to put the extended warranty on it, but that's my opinion.
But.
I know we're going to have electrical problems are what we're going to chase, and it's not going to be transmission and engines. And if, if electrical was covered under the five-year warranty, we're still, we're still financing this thing for seven years. So we're keeping it for 10.
You got to have the dollar figuring in and out, Mike, it's, I'm sure you can tell them down the road, okay, we want this or we don't want that. But you got to, you, you got to have the dollar mounted to the motion.
No, I'm not making, it's not my motions, I'm just saying that I.
No, I'm asking you, it has to happen right here, right now? We have to decide what we're going to get for.
Yeah, because we got to figure out how much you want to order it.
Otherwise, I'm not going to be able to tell them what, when I order it, and what, what to put on it.
So we want, you want to, you think it would be appropriate to add the five-year warranty? That, is that bumper-to-bumper, or?
It doesn't, it, the seven-year and the five-years say the same verbiage, I just don't know.
I'd like, I guess, I, I'd like to know what's covered under the warranty, I guess would be more of an appropriate thing. Does it only cover if there's like a major catastrophic failure with the engine? Or is it going to cover if we have electrical problems?
I don't, in your research, Mark, I don't know what after-treatment combination plan means. And it's under both warranties, it says unlimited engine hours and after-treatment combination plan.
I'm not sure. So is the price going to change if we don't do this today?
Not if you're ordering it for blue, but we have to do it, he said, we have to do it in the early January to get the paint code changed.
Okay, so can we get those questions answered then, before the next meeting and go from there?
We're not meeting before January 2nd, though.
Well, it's early January, I mean.
We're meeting January 13th, is the next scheduled board meeting.
Well, the thing's not going to be built at that point, so it, with the, because the warranty's not built on the truck. So if I find it all out and you think it's a good idea to add it, then you could add, make the motion at the next meeting, once you have all the information. And we call them and say, we want the warranty for five years too.
That's what, that's what we'll do.
It's not going to affect the build.
That's what we'll do then, so Mark's, Mark's motion stands?
Yes, Mark's motion stands. Any more discussion before I call the question? All in favor of Mr. Brown's motion to buy the truck? Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Opposed?
Thank you, board.
So there's an action item for, is that something that?
I was on, I was on the phone with him today, I can call him again tomorrow.
So that's something Mr. Smollett.
I will handle that, yeah, Mark's done enough of it. The other thing that I think you should clarify is, does this warranty come from International?
Or an outside source, right?
Correct.
And what's, is it bumper-to-bumper, or what's covered?
What is covered?
Because I would agree with Mike, if we're going to have any issues.
It's going to be electrical, yeah, I mean, the driveline and stuff, yeah, that was a good call.
Bulletproof, yep.
That was a good call.
I think that having this truck undercoated, Mike said they put it right up on the rack. You know, they've got a lift big enough to pick this truck up, and they wax oil it. And I think that that will go a long ways, you know, I'm guessing most of the electrical issues are corrosion-related. You know, the transmission, the, the other thing I don't know about the trucks that we're currently using. That I like about HP Fairfield, I'm not saying the others were not, but these cabin chassis are ordered to be plow trucks. So. A lot of trucks, like a, if a truck's ordered to be a road tractor, you've got air tanks. Batteries, all that stuff mounted along the frame, back towards the rear axle, on the inside too. These are all ordered to have everything, nothing behind the cab, clear frame back, because you've got. That's where all the plow equipment attaches, so if you don't start with that chassis, the, the. The company that mounts the plows and the dump box have to move that stuff. You know, if the transmission computer is mounted on the inside of the frame rail, back by the transmission, they move it. And they move the air tanks, and that's when the corrosion and the electrical issues start. You know, it's that aftermarket wiring that causes so much.
So our action item is, Bob is going to follow up on the warranties and get some answers, and then at the next meeting, you guys can take some action, if you need to.
That was, who, who seconded that motion?
I did.
Thank you.
The next one should be, should have less. Lions Club request to use Crystal Beach for the ice fishing derby.
I'd make a motion that we allow the Castleton Lions Club to use Crystal Beach for the annual ice fishing derby. On February 15th and 16th, and they would like to access it the Monday before.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I mean, they did include their insurance and all that, so you just get them a key or a combination to the thing. They're going to need to keep that locked, but they're not in there during that week.
Yeah, because they want to keep it plowed out, I talked to Stan Patch about it last week.
We know what behaviors happen at that place if we don't keep that parking lot secured in the winter.
Normally, it's open during the winter.
We agreed to keep it open during the winter at one of the meetings here, and they'll, they'll keep it plowed out. They, they do that so the town crew doesn't have to go in and do it. But we said during the wintertime, we're going to have less riffraff, so that we open it back up, so ice fishermen can get in there, snowmobilers and.
Yeah, once it's froze up and everything. Town report, do we have any thought, more thoughts on dedication and in memory of?
I have an inkling. I think Jim Leamy should be in memory of for all the years that he's put in.
Dedication to.
We also could add your wife to it, to the 29 years that she's put in.
We need to, not could, we're need. Well, you saw the, the, yeah, you can, if you want to do that, I'll keep out of that discussion.
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's a couple people that we would want to consider then, just so we don't short anyone. I really like the idea of dedicating it to people that can smell the flowers when you give it to them. And. What about Marianne Jacobowski?
She's already had one.
She did, okay, okay.
Bob Ward was the other one.
Yeah, he retired from here.
And Nancy Trudeau.
Yep.
Nancy Trudeau.
She retired as a treasurer.
And I know it kind of waters it down when you add more people, but there are a lot of people that have dedicated a lot to the community.
We definitely miss some people. I believe so, but if you're talking retirees, because it came to light at the party, that we missed Hawk Kent, Joe Root, and Tracy.
In years past, yeah.
And one other guy, but now we're going way back in time.
At minimum, Mike, I planned on mentioning the, the two full-time employees we had who retired.
Yeah.
At minimum, that was Bob Ward and Melanie Holmes. In, in the select board report, but if you want to do more than that, then I will stay out of that discussion, if you guys can decide what you want to do.
Well, Hawk didn't spend his whole life here, right, he was here for 10 years?
He also retired 10 years ago.
Yeah, I think it's got to be within, within the, within that year, I think should be the stretch.
Yeah, but he didn't work all that long. He took Tom Pritchard's place, I think Hawk worked about 10 years for the town. Bob worked. Bob Ward, how many years did he work?
20-something.
And how long's he been retired?
Last year, he retired right before Melanie.
So we have to include him, yes.
And Nancy retired her in January of this year, is what I know. Well, Melanie was January 2nd.
So I would go with the retirees, if it was me.
What do we do with Jim Leamy, he hasn't retired yet, he's only 90, he's got another 30 years in it.
No, he's going to be included in there, he needs to be.
Yeah, because the odds of him retiring probably aren't really going to happen, he's just going to continue to work on through, so.
So what if we, this is only my thought, what if we dedicate the town report to Mr. Leamy? In honor of his many decades, I don't know how many, 30 or 40 years at least, of.
Service.
Of service to the town in several capacities, and then. Say in appreciation or mention the two full-time employees who retired, and the part-time employee who retired. I mean, I don't remember how long Nancy was treasurer, but she was lister prior to that.
Yeah, yeah.
I would agree with that.
Yep.
Or something along those lines.
I like that.
No, I'll get photos, like, like.
We already did Joe Bruno, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, did Joe last year, and Jonas, and we mentioned Honore Fleming as well.
Yep.
Yep.
In last year's report.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually grabbed those out of the file drawer and looked at them all, so that, because, um, and, and in addition to that, if you, I've all seen the email I sent you regarding the, the select board report. I, those are the, just the, the, uh, just the beginning of an outline, and those are the topics that I thought we should cover. So if no one wants to add or subtract anything to that, then I'll move forward with coming up with a draft that I can send to all four of you to see if you like what I've got put together and what you wanna add, subtract, or multiply, or divide. We have until mid-January to get this done.
I liked what you had.
Yeah, it's just a outline, it's, you know, there's gotta be a lot of meat added to those bones. But those, that's the bones of it, as far as I know, unless there's something I'm forgetting or something you think that should be more appropriate than the town manager's report. So, if you, you know, you know, I don't need to know today, I just would need to know probably by early next week, because that's when I'm gonna start really working on it.
I would say start working on it, but that's just my opinion.
Yep.
Well, I won't work on it until next week anyways, because of things that are happening this week.
Expect the draft by Monday morning, Dick.
Well, hold your breath, I wanna see you turn. Okay, let's move on, um. Operating budget discussion, um. I haven't seen this, but I, I knew where it was going and where the numbers were at, and it hasn't significantly changed, Mike, it's gone down a little?
It went down, yeah. I think the last one you saw was 208,000, the last one, I'll have it with me, I can look it up, but. After plugging in the, the consumer price index stuff for the police department and the ASME union, and got the real numbers for, um, the insurances, um, did a little more, um, review of this thing. The new, I can't read this thing, the new number is 4,413,072 dollars, which is 192,542 dollars, less than the previous year, or a 4.6% increase. Which, last time, we're up to 4.9, I believe.
It was 4.9, I think was the last version. And that does not include any increases in the capital reserves.
There are only one thing, if you go to, um-
What page, Michael?
I'm gonna get, find the right page. It's on the highway department.
Excuse me, Dick?
Yes? I'm listening.
Determination regarding separate ballot articles for reserve accounts, which would be for this topic on the agenda?
Continuing annual operating budget, no, not on our, not on our-
I don't have it on my, but, I don't have it on my agenda.
You got the old, you got the first version of that, this, the one that here should be the one that's on the website.
I just checked the website, and it has that still on it.
Oh. Yeah, well, that's, I talked to Dick about it, it shouldn't have been on there, cuz-
Okay.
It's actually gonna be part of this discussion, or at least briefly.
So, I'm on, um, if you look at page, uh, 12 of 18. At the very top, um, uh, right above the words total town mechanic, should be a line that says capital improvement equipment reserve. You see that one?
Yeah.
Yep, right there.
The number in the gray column, which is the current fiscal year, was 110, and I bumped it to 100, or it was 100, I'm sorry, and I bumped it to 110, that's the only reserve account that I put any other different numbers in.
Okay, and we still are anticipating a need to improve, increase it beyond that, so that's the, that's the other part of this discussion, Allison, is, um, what if, what specifically are we going to do with, uh, reserve account articles, if that's what we decide to do?
I, I, it was off the agenda, cuz I figured, after talking to you, Dick, that if you guys approved this, or if you didn't approve this, if you still, once another meeting, that, um, we don't need the ballot article language, like, there's no push to get it done this meeting. So, that tax rate formula that I talked about today, that, that would be for next meeting, and based on what you see on that, you might, might determine what you look at for the increases to the reserves.
Yeah.
So that's why I wanted to kinda harness it together, so you could have an inform, make an informed decision, I guess. If that's acceptable. But the language, I, I drafted in, in my, in my report for the fire department, I kinda drafted some language in there, um, that would, what it would kinda look like for each one of them. But I also didn't redo the replacement schedule, cuz if you're gonna try to keep the trucks for 10 years, then that would change that whole schedule. And it would give me some, if, if you wanted to go that route, or you wanna see both of them, at least by next meeting, I could have a side-by-side comparison with it.
Well, I think we know what the replacement schedule is now.
Yeah.
And it will be an experiment to see if we can maintain these vehicles to last longer.
So, longer than 10 years, Mark, or longer than five?
Longer than seven.
Longer than seven. Well, that's what we're, that's what we're doing right now.
I mean, we, you were only asking to vote out four years for the, right? You were only going four years for the reserves and a separate ballot article, right?
Well, it doesn't even go, cuz it has to be for one year, because you can't pu- push the future, you can't tell future boards that they-
Yeah, that's right, we talked about them.
So, it'd be the first one of that, of that vehicle replacement plan, which was 75,000 for paving, 75 for the-
Yeah, so if we kept it the way it was, and then next year, you could say, "Well, we've decided to go out 10 years, so we're gonna pull 10,000 out, out of the reserve, instead of going up 70, we'll go up 60."
Well, capital reserve truck replacement plan should be reviewed every year anyways, I think. I think it would be irresponsible to not review that every year.
Absolutely.
If they approve this, then the 75 that was in the plan could be 65, because there's 10 in this.
Correct.
Kinda eas- softens the blow a little bit.
Well, it doesn't change the fact that trucks cost significantly more than they did-
Yeah, I mean, we don't know what it's gonna go up to anyway, so.
And they could cost significantly more, or not, in five years' time, too, we don't know that. We know what direction the fire department apparatus is going, and that's pretty scary.
Plus, you have to order these things two years in advance now. You're ordering them, and you don't even really know what it's gonna be like in two years.
Yeah.
And we, don't forget, we still have that imminent replacement of the grader. It's gonna come up in a few years. I mean, we've put some money into it, so it's got some goodness left in it, but it's sooner or later-
Another 20, it's gonna be worn out.
Not gonna be much goodness left eventually. So we can, are you suggesting we approve this budget tonight, Mike, or do you wanna, uh, another two weeks to massage it?
I, I don't know how much, I, I think I milked the, this thing pretty, there, uh, there are some things that I, that are in here, Dick, that I think that are, it's, were danger, what is down, I, if you look at comparison years, and like, any change to something could cause all of a sudden we're gonna be underwater a little bit. So that's why I'm, this is my best, like-
Safest bet.
Safest bet, lowest I could go, safest bet without, you know, jeopardizing, uh, fuel costs go up, or insurances go up, things that will, um, put us underwater again. So, I would say that this is what I, would be my final draft of the select board.
Well, I, I'm gonna be honest here, I have not gone through this version, I went through the version you gave us two weeks ago quite thoroughly. And it's not significantly different, but it is different. So we have basically three options, Board, that I see, and jump in if you can see a fourth. We can either approve this budget tonight, as it stands, or we can all review it and approve it on the 13th, if that's soon enough, Mike. Or we can have a special meeting after the first of the year, just for the budget, if we so desire. Those are the three options I see. Do you see any more, Mark?
I don't, not that makes sense.
If, if you don't give me guidance tonight, in two weeks or a special meeting, it's gonna be the same one. Cuz I put it, I, I am at the point where I've collected all the information that I could to put in here, so that's, that's what, that's why I said it'd be my final draft to the board.
The only thing different between this one and the one they gave us two weeks ago was payroll?
Payroll and the insurances, that I finally got the-
The, the costs that you have no control over.
If those are the only two differences, I'm comfortable.
Minus the 10,000 that was put in there for the-
Right.
In the reserve, that was it.
Yeah, I went over the previous one.
Cuz I had nothing else to change, I just was waiting for the consumer pricing numbers, and I was waiting for the passive. Um, it, it was, it's 110,000 dollars. And if you look at the very back page of this one, um, the 110, some of it included the wastewater plant, so the insurance that are included in here is 105,600, which was an increase over last year, so that's what I was waiting for. So I just gave you a snapshot of what, what was, what we're paying right now for our liability insurance.
So if we approve this budget tonight, then it's no longer the town, well, it is, it's still the town manager's budget, but it's also our budget. And we're gonna be responsible to explain it and defend it in March.
I mean, the only stuff that really went up was wages and insurance, and there was some maintenance items that needed to be-
Yeah.
You know? I don't know what else you're gonna pull out of them.
Well, I'm not saying it needs to go down or up, I'm just saying that it, you know, I just wanna make sure everyone is clear, there's two new members on the board, I wanna make sure they're clear what, what we're doing to ourselves here. And we need to do that, we need to do that, and we need to do it eyes wide open. So if we wanna approve this budget, doesn't mean that we can't amend that, and if something comes to light, but he needs some guidance in order to do that. Then we'll have to work on what, if any, separate articles we want for capital reserve accounts. As we're gonna ask, if we've all decided as a board that we're gonna ask the voters as separate issues, if they want us to bump those up or not. And we're going to explain to the voters what that's going to, what the financial ramifications of that are to them, if we do that, and what it's gonna do to their services if they do not. So, if we wanna approve this budget, we need a motion for, I believe the only thing we need to actually have in our motion is the number. Is that correct?
If you wanna put a percentage in there, you can, but-
Wouldn't hurt to have the percentage in the minutes.
If not, we got the, whatever, 13, or the next, the next piece of paper you have in your, that thing right there, that's the timelines, we have to get-
Yeah.
The warnings and stuff to the publishers and stuff like that, so, um, the 3rd of February is that, we have to have the first, uh, draft of the warning and the rest of the town report to the repro. So, whatever you, whatever motions and stuff you make pushes, um, Hannah up against the wall to get it all pulled together and proofread, and, cuz we usually have it proofread by three or four people. And to get it to the, uh, repro by the 3rd of February. So you got, the next meeting, it could happen, you could wait for the next meeting, um, it's not gonna, it's not gonna screw anything up.
But it's not gonna help you either.
Unless you give me guidance and say, work on something, get this lower, or this is too low, I want you to add something to it, whatever you give me for guidance, um, but I, I scrubbed this thing again today. That's what I got, that's what I come up with.
Well, there's no reason to put it off unless somebody's got a reason to put it off.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
We'd make a motion that we approve the town manager's 2020, 25, 26 budget draft for 4,413,000 dollars.
Don't forget the 72 dollars.
4,413,072 dollars.
I'll second that. Do we wanna put your percentage in there, Mark, if it's up 4%?
An increase of 4.6%.
You did second that, correct?
I did.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nice job, Mike.
So now, we have agreed to have separate articles for the, uh, truck replacement, for the fire department truck replacement for the, or, equipment replacement for the highway department, and paving reserve accounts. So we'll have to, by the 13th, we'll have to decide what those numbers should be.
One for paving and one for?
Highway equipment.
And the fire department's in that as well?
And the fire department, well, three different articles.
Separate one, okay.
Right on the back of the budget page, I think.
The fire department reserve account is a separate reserve account from the highway department reserve account for equipment, and also there's a reserve account for paving, correct?
Yeah, so you have paving, highway vehicle reserve, and fire department vehicle reserve.
I, I'll stay, the, I'll stay incorrect on that one, paving is not in a reserve, but highway department numbers carryover, so you'd be increasing the paving budget, that, that one I showed you there, that reclaim repave one. And then, whatever doesn't get used each year by statute rolls into the next, it can roll over to the next year, so if there was, whatever, there was 239,000 in there right now, and if we only use 200, then 39,000 automatically rolls into something called highway carryover, which we've used before in the past to help purchase things, but it's not a reserve, it's not a, a true reserve account. It's just the operating budget.
So we have to use the right words.
Right.
In our warning, in our article.
Yeah.
But the other two are in fact reserve accounts.
Yeah, that last page, the, I don't think the numbers, the percentages equal, I didn't go through those, but it was 75, 75, and 50.
Yeah, those are still the three, and those were based on that plan that we all looked at and decided that would make sense at the time. So, um, I saw in your town manager's report, you have, I think it was the town manager's report, you have verbiage for these articles already?
Ju- just for the, I just said an example for the fire department, so, um, again, I didn't, I didn't present anything to the board, because I didn't know what you wanted to do with, once you get the, the increases, like, for a $200,000 house and a $300,000 house, if, how that would impact your decision on those articles. So I, I didn't, I didn't present it to you tonight, it would be at the next meeting.
I think that's what we're gonna need to do to sell it.
So we need to be prepared to make those decisions at the next meeting, which is the 13th.
And I think we should be prepared to have a couple additional meetings with taxpayers to try and, uh, make sure everybody understands what those are, and what the consequences are.
Yeah, what the, what the cost will be and what the consequences are.
Well, we already had a special meeting and nobody showed up, so maybe we could just add it to a regular meeting.
I'm kinda wondering if we should do some outreach to, uh, the community center?
I would, I went, I went to the community center, and I talked to the folks there about this kinda stuff, and the lady sitting next to me grabbed my arm, and she said, "Thank you," she goes, "Somebody actually explained it, cuz we never really know what it means." And so, she said, "Now it makes sense to me why there's a big increases." But I'd be willing to, if you had a nominee, or two of you, so it's not a quorum, but to, uh, borrow Peg TV's equipment, cuz we, I can, I'm allowed to do that. And, uh, we could make a little video, too, that could be put out on Peg TV, could be put a link to it on our, on social media that talks about these three articles and the reasons behind it, so, it's just a thought, and I'd be willing to go through the motions to get everything, and, um, you could address the public through that, because they might watch it if it's on social media, and we get the link out front porch forum, and, and our website, and our, on our Facebook page.
Are we agreed with the three numbers that Mike has proposed?
Excuse me, I think those three numbers had fit the replacement schedule.
Yeah, they're, uh-
They're not super, well, they're-
Not necessarily adequate, but they're, they're a great place to start.
Right, we have-
Right, we have to balance what would be ideal and what we can sell to the public.
Yeah, because right now, our paving budget does not even two miles. And we need to do three. So we need to get there pretty soon. No, we can't get, trying to get there in one year is not realistic, but...
If we can explain this in a way that makes sense, I think that people will approve it. But if we don't, and it fails, then we have a lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah.
You know, I think it would be worth it to consider, you know, attending Lions Club meeting, whatever functions we could think about to reach as many people as possible.
I think that's all. Okay, well, we'll start with getting the articles created, which is something that Mr. Jones is going to do, right?
Correct.
And then, uh, once you have those drafts, you can email them to us and we can start figuring out how we wanna present this to the public. So it's a matter of education. The rank and file in the town needs to know what we're wrestling with and what our proposed solution is.
Right. Nobody wants to spend more money, but when you explain why it's necessary...
Are you taking a ride up East Hubbardon Road lately? And then take a ride up Scotts Hill Road in Fairhaven. Have you done that?
Have you done that one though?
Not all of it. It, it's, it needs work.
Those are the roads in the state.
It's, I don't know about that. I do know that it's a heck of a lot worse than River Street.
If, if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm just pointing to, Ray, you go ahead.
So if you put that numbers in there, it was 200,000, right? 75, 75, 50. If you added that to the, the current budget year we're in, and you go to a $500,000 house, it would be $197.44 per year increase in the current fiscal year. I don't have grand list for next year and all that, or the, or the worksheet. At a $100,000 house, it'd be $39.49. So, and we have it for every hundred, every $50,000 increment.
Yeah, I think that's a way to, you know, for every $100,000 of assessed value of your house, it's gonna cost you 40 bucks a year.
Well, like I said the other day, this, this costs the average homeowner, mean, median, median homeowner in town, 50 bucks a year, this building.
For a $50,000 increase for that other one, it'd be, $100,000 home would be $9.87, and a $500,000 home would be $49.36.
Well, that's the kinda information we need to put together in a cohesive manner and then be able to present it in a way that people can understand it. Alright, so now we're gonna move on to...
You wanna call in, Roy?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Sorry, Roy.
I just heard a lot of the media, media mention that we're lacking the newspapers. And I believe that newspapers are still relevant. It's not just front page four. We reach a lot of people that don't have social media. And the second thing I do wanna mention is that there is upheaval in the newspaper business. As we have seen, two publications in the last few weeks, determined that they're not going to be printing newspapers anymore. Manchester Journal News, News, and Lex Region Free Press will not be printing anymore after January 6th. So I hear you mentioning a lot of different things that are coming up and whatnot, including the fact that we are one of your official newspapers. So that perhaps you might be considering what you placed in with a free press, maybe you would be placing with that side news. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Roy.
I wasn't aware the Free Press was going to be ceasing printing. I wasn't aware the Free Press was gonna stop printing.
Yeah, they're gonna have digital online, which is, well, that's, that's up to people to decide whether...
I'd rather read a newspaper myself.
Yeah, that's just me. I appreciate your commitment to printed news.
The thing about social media is, if you have any type of business or you're in school or whatever, you're on it all day probably. And a lot of people don't go on it for specific things like, you know, newspapers, or even the town website for that matter. You know, I don't think I've been on a town website maybe once or twice. But people just, you know, they're, they're so oriented towards having the phone open all the time and everything. Sometimes, you know, they just wanna sit down and read a newspaper or magazine or something. We're still, still relevant.
I'm, I totally agree with that. So now, we need to do our ARPA resolution.
This is in your packet. That, that's the dates that we had to have stuff turned into repro by. So I just wanted, just so you, so you can see what we're up against as far as any changes that get made or... The 3rd of February was the one that really impacts us like word, cause we have to have the warning and stuff draft in there.
No, I, I just put my phone, I thought I put it on silent so it wouldn't make any noise. It was on vibrate. And it vibrated, so I just put it on silent. It's not calling anybody right now. I just didn't want it to make it do anything. So let's talk about ARPA resolution, Mike.
Alright. This piece of paper is worth 695,000 dollars. So this basically takes that ARPA spreadsheet, and to have, to be a true obligation, you have to have a contract against it. And this is coming from the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns. So when I called in a panic on Friday and said, "Oh my God," cause I was gonna go south, you would never see me again, if we lost $700,000. So this could be, what happens is in this resolution, because ARPA funds were originally designed for revenue loss, if you're under the $10 million, you read through each of the whereas in here. So what the, the board has an option is, they can take the ARPA that's, that unspent balance right now, and you can pay anything that has normal provision of government. So talking to the league today, to make it simple, I was told, just use, just use the wages. Right, instead of find, use wages, rather than this came from the fire department reserve, this came from the highway reserve and have to, you know, cause you're, basically what's gonna happen is, you put this money into the general fund. It meets all the federal requirements. There's no shady deals. But it takes the time constraints that ARPA put on us, and they're gone. It's committed. It's obligated, not committed, it's obligated. So, and so basically what it does here is it pays back the, this, we pay the wages that are listed in here, up to that 695,794.09. And it's, it's now in the operating fund. It's gonna create a surplus at the end of the fiscal year. That's, that's how it's gonna work, right? Cause, um, cause that is, basically that stuff that's on that list that you still wanna do it, you're gonna make another resolution. I'll create the resolution for anything you still wanna do that's on that list. So now you're obligating that money. And it doesn't, cause if it goes and stays in the general fund, and you don't do anything with it, then it goes before the voters. Either it's gonna stay there to pay the tax rate down, which 700 or 695,000 dollars worth of projects don't get done. And that's, that's the choices you get. You do a resolution, and you say what you wanna use it for, and what, you know, what it is, what the amount is, and what it's gonna be used for. And, or it goes back into the tax rate. And ARPA wasn't designed to pay down the tax rate. That's a, that's a, that wasn't, not one of the options.
That was very clear at the beginning.
So what we have to, what you'd have to do tonight is you, this resolution, this has been vetted through the league and through the attorneys, that you're gonna, we're gonna use the ARPA to offset revenue loss during COVID. And the amount from January, or July 1st of 2023 through June 30th of 2024, that's that whole fiscal year. And boom, it offsets it. Now you're gonna create a surplus. And the surplus you use down the road.
At the end of the fiscal year, we have to obligate that surplus.
There's, there's a couple options is, if it's something on that list and you wanted to, you don't wanna wait till the end of that, like that Salt and Sand Shed, right? Maybe, maybe it was gonna be done in June. You can overspend that, the line, the like highway department line, and it's just gonna be covered by that surplus. It's another way of doing it. But it's cleaner with the, with the, with the resolution. Cause it's for a specific purpose and in a specific amount. So if we don't, if you say we, if you guys don't do this, then on July, or January 1st of 2025, we lose this money. Goes back to, goes back to the US Treasury.
Or we can spend it all in the next three days, or four days, or whatever.
We've got eight days to spend it, Rob.
You gotta have contracts, so you gotta be able to go out and get it in your hands. Bob, I know you wanted to buy about six more police cruisers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I want that Salt and Sand Shed built. That's all I want. So the only one we need to, so we need to have a motion to approve Resolution 24-12-01.
I would make a motion to approve Resolution 24-12-01.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
You gotta have the dates in there? Did you say you have to have the dates, Mike?
Well, the whereas we don't have to read, but you should say the amount, and this, the bottom, where it says expend down towards the bottom. It says expend SLFRF funds in the amount of 695, 79409 for the purpose of municipal operating expenses as outlined below for the period 7, July 1st of '23 through 630 of '24.
Do I need to read everything under that?
No.
Just what you had there?
Correct.
Okay, I will amend my motion to read, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 24-12-01 to expend SLFRF funds in the amount up to 695,794.09 for the purpose of municipal operating expenses as outlined in the resolution for the period of 7/1/23 through 6/30/24.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for not losing $700,000.
Yeah.
The other two here only need your signature, right, Mike?
EBIT, what, EBIT stocks are not signing right now.
That one's in the Fairchild truck. That's all you.
No, I can do it based on your motion.
Yes, that's all you. Okay. So let's start talking about a manager's report while we're passing this around to get it signed.
Thank you.
Based on, on this report, I'm on, under page two is reported, there are highlighted areas. It kinda let you know that the things are, we move at that snail's pace, but the small scale bike and path grant for South Streets moving, still moving. The Salt and Sand Shed, we met with Ben from Bud Carpenter's business. And the next steps is to work with Fussin' O'Neil on the stormwater mitigation part of it. They've already started it, but it's just to keep it moving.
Are we looking at putting it in a different spot now?
No, just where the current shed is right now, is just over that footprint. It goes back, going back 100 feet from the road with an apron. We, we, we went from the back and went forward, and we said, "We can put the building in here with minimal groundwork being done, minimal, not impacting any stormwater drains that are there, and have an apron and still keep it far enough away from the road that when trucks drive out, that they don't want that salt and sand to go on the road." So there's enough room there for that stuff to not fall off the tailgate immediately. And then Jeff's working on the sand pile, because we don't need to do anything for that. We, we believe the footprint's big enough. We're just gonna start, when you pull in and look at it, we're gonna work from that side now and back towards the road, because that, we need that space. We don't want that so tight against the other building. We wanna create a little bit of space. And there's a power pole there too. So we're gonna look at what it would cost to put it underground versus the pole. But I said, "We'll dig it up. Put it underground, we'll forget it's there, and somebody will dig it up." So anyway, those are just some considerations. But yes, we could put it in that footprint, and it looks like we don't have to do a lot of site prep.
Okay.
And we don't have to move the town or the, the public sand shed. That can stay where it's at. We just do a little bit of work on the entrance road, cause it'd be a really hard turn to get in there. So just a little bit of work there, but we don't have to move a lot of things around. If, if the stormwater stuff lets it sit there, cause there is that trench that runs along the north side of it that's, comes out of the old landfill, of the cap landfill. So we can't impede any of that stuff. So we gotta make sure that whatever we do fits into that stormwater master plan. But I'm thinking it can. That was on page what, two? Is that it? Jeff did do the applications for the category B and C Better Roads Grants, and I put in there Moscow Road and, yeah, this road, um, off, off North Road out to the cemetery. Brown Farm Road, thank you. Remember, you guys went out there with us and looked at the clover, and that's also back on here to try to get funding for that one. At the bottom of page three, the, the sign grant, that's what I call it, the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant. Those, all this stuff is in the ground, the breakaways, the brackets. They just gotta go finish putting up the poles and the signs. And they have till the end of this month to get it done. I'm on page four, under Transfer Station. Heath come and visited me today. The truck's back running. He hauled today with it. So whatever they did avalanche, obviously worked cause it's running.
That was the $5,000?
Five, $5,800.
Okay.
Yep. Said it was a little, little groggy this morning, but it's, it started.
Were we all?
Yeah. Under Personnel on page five, I, I think I told the board this, but we're gonna go and have the CDL, Cassellas come to us and do that in like the March timeframe, where winter's starting to subside. And I gotta, I gotta still make sure I have enough bodies to plow while they're in class. But that will give them time to get their permits and get everything in place. And next, next winter, we don't have this issue about like, I don't have anybody to drive a truck, cause they don't have a CDL. On page number eight, the thanking the board for obliging the 20,000, well, that's gonna be part of that, that resolution stuff, so. Do a little change of that. The trestle, they still haven't sent me, I sent a message back to them today to, we were supposed to meet today down at the Fellowship Bible Church to talk about the water issue that's ponding behind the sidewalk. But Brian Sanderson from VTранs was sick, and we had to cancel and reschedule. But that was, he's the one that I've been working with for the South Street Trestle and getting the, their attorney's opinion of that who, it's our responsibility versus theirs. And they still haven't sent that to me. I was gonna be able to accost him today, but he's sick, so. Page nine, Truck 106, which is the 2013 tandem, is still non-mission capable. The, the drive for this, the bed chain, the bearings, one of the bearings is bad. And he's been working with Viking and just getting the parts has been a huge issue. They send the wrong part, and then he's still waiting on parts. So that truck is still down. So that truck is still down. We already talked about vehicle replacement. So on page 11, I just did a sample in red. This is Shell of Town, add an additional 75,000, Highway Department, blah, blah, blah. That's just a sample of what what the language could look like for those three separate ballot articles. Bottom of page 11, because A1 or done, it was A1. They didn't clean out the storm drains like they were supposed to. So that's going to be a spring issue. But I think I've explained in the past that Route 4A from Sand Hill Road to the town section of that town highway or state highway goes from Sand Hill Road to the bridge just east of the Amtrak station. They're paving that in 2026. So all this stuff on storm drains and that anything that runs underneath the that stretch of road, we need to get done so we don't have them paved and then say, oh, we got to tear this up. So that's, they know what I've been working with them, letting them know what we're trying to do. And I said, if you can push off the timely timeframe till like the end of the summer, that would be really good. They'd give us some more time to work on it. There's still haven't committed to that. On page 12, former CBS, if you don't mind, I'm going to start calling it the Rec Center. Because I keep using the word former CBS and it's really, I guess we're using it as a rec center. But I talked to John Alexander. I had a meeting with Andy Vermile and John last week. And it was a good meeting, actually. But we talked about some of the maintenance. And I just gave, I told Paul, get the DM air handlers and or the motors that aren't working pulled. Get the new ones and get fix the thermostats and took it out of John Alexander's hands. So it costs us a little bit more money, but it'll be done in a relatively hopefully quick manner.
And he can do something different.
Yeah. Based on our meeting with Andy, his plate will be full.
So nothing against John, but that's what Paul does.
Yeah, yeah. And Paul knows too, he's like, I can go pull the motors. And anyway, he said, you can't rewind or re string them or whatever it's called. Rewind, what's that?
Rewind.
Yeah, can't really do that. These are going to be replacement by replacement motors. So that's, that will move on, move forward, I guess. So on pay, the bottom of page 14, under Fire Station, the sprinkler system here was activated. Low air leak caused the system to activate. Thank God Heath was here. They were able to turn off the water pretty quickly. Mickey McClure, I called him, he came in, called Julie Ellis. She came in the next day. They did the whole drying and drilling holes and blowing air through things so it wouldn't get moldy. And Joey Smith was up in the attic pulling the wet insulation out and putting in bags. And then Jan R. Sprinkler came back and put a new section of black pipe in that won't have the issue of that galvanized, that thinner galvanized, just rotted from the inside.
Already.
And yeah, which is why, because when they charge the system and test it, water gets in the lines and if it sits in there, it just creates that moisture. But the the black pipe that's in there won't be doing that. So that was replaced. I filed the the report with the league. And we'll see what the dollar amounts come out for the cleanup and everything because we have a thousand dollar deductible. And if it costs 2,000, maybe it's worth it. But if it costs 1,500, I'd probably like, no. Because it affects our mod rating later. And you know, it might cost us more than $500 in the long run with insurance increases. But thanks to the fire department too, because they, Heath toned and they came in here and worked on it and getting stuff cleaned up. On page number 18, under Assistance of Firefighters Grant, that was submitted. We met the deadline by two days. So we'll see where that lands, but we don't know for a little while on that one. Further down on the page, under Fire Department Operations, the training on the new ladder was completed. Dick Combs was there at it. I stopped by to give him moral support. But there was some other towns that came in to take part too. But I talked to Heath about it and he basically is not going to put the truck into service until they get some more drivers training on it and more pump operation time. But he said sometime at the end of January is what he's looking at to actually put it in service. So they let, the guy that bought the old ladder truck lives like 40 minutes from here. And he's cool that it's still garage camp. It's not out in the cold. And so that that will stay in service until the new one goes into service. Let's, that conclude my report barring your questions.
That was good news to get 6,600 for that old brush truck.
Yeah, yeah.
I was pleasantly surprised with that number.
Somebody wanted that 12,000 mile motor and clean truck, otherwise.
Makes somebody a good little dump truck.
Truck has no rust on it.
It's in good shape for its age. Hasn't been driven much.
Less than 12,000 miles.
I have no questions for Mike. Anyone else?
Any of you?
I was waiting, I was looking right at you.
Yeah, I know, I see that. So I got to ask you something. That ladder truck was on Route 4A the other night, 4:30, 5 o'clock. It was dark out. Just wondering whether you just out test driving it or?
Which one?
The brand new ladder truck.
Where was it at?
Going across Route 4A.
They were late in the day. They did some drivers training on it.
And they do drivers training. They're taking it out for training.
That's what I was asking. Somebody's, somebody's training to drive it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
And we all need turntable time on that too. So we can set it up and run it.
That's a big truck.
Yeah.
It is.
It is a big truck.
We're going to move on to purchase orders.
We all set?
I think we have a grand total of one, Rob.
I would make a motion to approve Purchase Order 053450 to Trees Incorporated for the sum of $8,850 for Pensamale Road.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
That was part of a grant too.
Yeah, this is all grant money, actually. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody know the person trying to get in the meeting? I don't want to get Zoom bombed. Don Kelly?
I do not.
Recognize a name. We could get Zoom bombed.
Sure, I know what that means.
People come in and then they start showing pornography or vulgar language and.
That's the thing?
It's called, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it's called Zoom bombing.
Somehow I don't, not surprised, but that thought never occurred to me.
You don't have another purchase order in there?
That's it.
There was one for the salt cargo.
Not according to the sheet either.
No, it was after, today I talked to Penny about it and Joe had it in his email. And I filled out the purchase order and she was going to add it to the list.
I don't see it.
Okay.
I mean, this starts with one for 500 bucks. No, this one's for 100 bucks. This one is Atrout. We've already done that one.
Just sucks because they delivered that stuff on the 11th of, 13th of November. We still haven't paid them.
Oh, geez.
Is it in the warrants?
She might have redone the warrants. Thought she was going to put the thing in the purchase order in there. But I know you guys approved at a, you know, select board meeting. Maybe she did add it in there.
It's in the warrants, they can write the check.
Yeah.
It'd be your Cargill, is that right?
Yeah, it'd be Cargill.
Yeah, I have an updated one here. Cargill, yeah, there's a warrant for Cargill here that's updated. It was not in our packet.
By itself.
So here's a copy that you can give one to Mark.
You need to see that, Mike?
I, I know, I know what it is.
It's okay, I don't have a copy for him anymore.
Okay.
I got five copies.
All right.
But this warrant was not on our original packet list, I don't believe.
1222, nope.
It was not. It is, so this, this warrant is going to be added in. Do you want the updated list, Rob, or?
I got it right here.
Okay. So we don't have a purchase order for this yet, but we do have a warrant, which means she can write the check.
Yeah, and that's why I'm surprised because she, I gave her the purchase order and she had the proceeds or the invoices.
But Joe and Penny can legally pay the bill now.
We all set?
I'm ready when you are, sir.
Well, I'll start with the cargo one here then. I would make a motion to approve Warrant Number 1222 for the sum of $86,422.68. Warrant Number 1223A for the sum of $600. Warrant Number 1223R for the sum of $60,887. Warrant Number 1219 for the sum of $14,377.39. Warrant Number 1223 for the sum of $1,956,379.50. Warrant Number 1212P for the sum of $20,870.40. And Warrant Number 1219P for the sum of $20,612.41.
I'll second.
I think the 1,900 something is for two.
No, it's a second quarter, second quarter paying the schools.
Yeah, school.
About the same price as two dump trucks.
Well, 1.89 million of that, that particular warrant was schools.
Yeah, I know. I'm just ribbing everybody after talking about how expensive trucks are.
Yeah.
I just had to make sure I read it correctly because that 1 million range is not a number I'm normally used to saying when it comes to banking stuff, so.
That's a big number.
Everybody see the the stuff about Chris Brown not running?
Yes. And Rob, I still try to sign my name in your spot now. That was my spot for 10 years.
Really?
His wife had surgery, apparently she's old. Hopefully doing all right. Rob, do you have my green pen?
No, I do not have your green pen.
Do you see a?
I went and told you if I did.
Young man from Castleton fell to his death on Black Mountain Saturday hiking.
No.
Believe a Castleton student.
It was that missing student, right?
Oh, yeah, that's, there's a story by now.
Yeah.
Is that over nearly, George?
Yep. Thank you.
Where do you park to climb that mountain? That's something I've always wanted to do.
So there's two ways up. If you, when you cross South Bay,
Yep.
Pike Brook is the first turn to your left. And that goes up the mountain and then north and taps into the Hewitt's Landing Road. Just before Hewitt's Landing, it's on the left.
Okay.
And it's a beautiful hike. There's a fire tower up there and a windmill. And you can see Lake George and Lake Champlain from there. Mostly the view of Lake George is what's.
I've never been up there. I've always wanted to go. I mean, I keep, every time I head home from Rutland and I see that mountain, I say, I need to climb that mountain. I've been saying it for 40 years.
Hour and 20 up. And then you can retrace your steps or you can go kind of down the other side and head towards White Hall and view the lake for quite a while and loop back.
So it's be done in an afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, you can do the whole long hike in four hours. And then there's another trail that heads to Fort Ann from there. Or Stables over there, a lot of trails. Yeah, the views are just phenomenal. You can see Rogers Rock from there.
Really?
Yeah. On Lake George where there's a revolutionary war, Rogers Rangers. They were up there and they supposedly slid down this 200, 200 feet, you think, Rob?
Yeah, it's pretty steep.
Slid down to the lake to escape the British.
Yeah.
You look at it and you go, that would be impossible, but you wouldn't think they could drag cannons across the frozen lake when it was 20 below zero either.
From Tecandroga to Boston.
Yeah.
That was what, like 200 pieces of artillery, something like that? Or well, it was a lot. I don't know for sure.
And they had to drop them down 100 foot ledge from Mount Independence. We descended from some pretty tough fellows.
Except for El Toro.
All right, so moving on. Select board comments. Mary Lee? Rob?
I have nothing.
Mark?
One, I'm not sure if this is appropriate or not. At the sewer commissioner meeting, we discussed making a minor change on page 25803 from May to shall. But because that's an ordinance, not a policy, it would have to be warned and published before we make any changes. Pretty sure that's what the town manager had advised us.
Do you want that just back, anything back before you in the next meeting or no? Because was there still stuff you were outstanding for those Board of Sewer Commissioners? Were you looking at changing any language in the?
I think that was the only thing we decided. We came down to that, so.
That they may charge. We had talked about changing it to they shall, not charge.
So let's go ahead and schedule a five minute sewer commissioners meeting before the next select board meeting. And we can make the motion to change that ordinance and then start that process. Or we can do it after town meeting day and with the new board, whoever that may be. Which pleasure board?
I would say just get it started, but.
Okay, then let's do that next meeting. We'll have a, we'll meet at like 6:45. That should be adequate time to make that decision and move forward. Mark, anything else?
No.
Bob?
Yeah, I've got three things. It can be real quick. The tree company that we hired back in the springtime to trim our roads, Mike, a couple of meetings ago, you said, no, they still haven't finished.
Trees Incorporated.
It was Trees Incorporated. Have they finished their obligation?
They were out last week with with Jeff. So they were, that was North Road and I don't know where North Road was. But yes, they they've started back in again.
So what's the status of the 6,500 cab and chassis just sitting up to the? What are we waiting for that?
March timeframe for Viking to get the plug of bed and plow system put on.
Okay. And I'm glad somebody's mentioned about Chris Brown. I was told today that it's our obligation to give three names to the governor to replace his, his spot.
I thought that the Republican Committee in town is obligated to do that, not our select word.
That's what I believe too.
Am I correct?
They have two nom, they were two people that they've been working.
It's not our responsibility to do that then.
It is not the select board's responsibility. It is the Republican Committee, this local committee or whatever. It's their responsibility to do that because.
And then the governor can pick whoever he wants, but.
Of those three names?
Anybody. But generally, we'll pick the nominee from the Republican Committee.
Well, he can pick you if he wants to.
He could pick a Democrat if he wanted, but that would be way out of.
That's not usual.
Norms.
We have a Republican governor.
Well, and we, he was an elected Republican and.
Yeah.
Due to circumstances beyond his control, he couldn't, couldn't serve the position that he ran for and won. Anything else, Bob?
That's it for now.
Two things. Um, I wanted to make sure everyone is aware that the, uh, Duzvitz versus Incorporated and site plan approval versus the, um, concerned citizens on South Street for the South, for the, uh, or on Sand Hill Road is due to be heard by the Supreme, Supreme Court on nine AM on Wednesday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. I don't believe they're gonna render a decision. That's when both of the attorneys will have fifteen minutes to present their case. And then the board, then the, um, Supreme Court moves on to another case, so they will deliberate and then render a decision at some point in the future. I don't know when.
It could be a week or it could be six months.
So that, um, that's the next thing on that. And does everyone know about the select board, regional select board meetup that's gonna be at the West Rutland Town Hall on Thursday, January sixteenth?
I'd like to go to that.
You're welcome to go. And if more than three members show up, it's not a meeting, so we don't need to warn it. Because we're not discussing town business. We just can't do any, we can't conduct any town business if there's more than three of us there.
That's on January sixteenth, like what time is that?
Uh, five thirty.
Okay.
It's sponsored by the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. If anyone wants a copy of this, I could have Hannah make copies.
Yeah, that would be nice, throw them in my box, yeah.
I can do that.
I'll take one just to read it or email it to me, one or the other.
How come I know about it and the rest of you don't?
I don't know.
Make five copies, put them in the mailboxes.
That would be great.
Now, is the town office that builds it right at the?
Yes.
The V there.
Quick digression, you know that little round window on the top?
Yeah.
When we first moved into, when Hirschman's first moved into town there, um, Sheldon Road, yours truly got to make a new window for that hole. That's all I got. Action items. We gotta talk about Cedar Mountain Road. Mike, you're gonna talk to, um, John Burke and start that process? And Bob's gonna look on, into the warranties on the dump, new dump truck?
Yes.
I don't have anything else. Is there anything else?
I don't think we had anything.
Oh, something I, when it should have brought up under Sleckman Concerns. Are we gonna take any action on, uh, the common area up at Crystal Beach?
I asked the town manager to start doing some research into what, who has access to that legally? For starters, we're gonna get that resolved. And then we as a board gotta decide what we're gonna do about the dock spaces or lack thereof. Because right now the system is broke, I don't know how broke, but it is broke. So we've gotta come up with a solution to that. Any, you wanna add anything to that, Rob?
My opinion would be to wait until we get the three guys that were looking to manage it or whatever they wanted to do and then go from there. I don't think we wanna shake it up too much up there. I mean, I don't think it's a huge issue right now. I mean, you get a couple people that complain every year, but I'm not sure if it's worth tearing it all the way open or not.
Okay, well, we can get the question about exclusivity.
Yeah.
Resolved. And that's what I asked Mike to do, is, is, is the opinion of some people that it's exclusively just those landowners that have access to that? And other people think that the whole town does and they both can't be right.
Correct.
So we're gonna find out who's right.
I mean, I know what I think, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
I know what I think and I'm not a lawyer either, so.
I know what you both think and you're not lawyers.
Well, one of our town managers camped up there.
Yeah.
Have you camped up there?
I have not, because after I heard that story, I'm like, well, I'm not gonna go up there and be accosted by people.
Well, there's also no sanitary facility, so.
That's one of the reasons why.
If you're gonna camp, you gotta bring your own. Well, the sign, that's why the sign up there is no overnight camping. There is a sign there that says that, that was put up by this town.
No open fires and.
Yeah. Do we, do you have a need for an executive session?
Hmm, no. But I, I would like to make one statement, if I could.
I'll allow it.
Thank you. I'm concerned about the transfer station revenue, um, really not offsetting the, the operating budget. So I'm trying, I'm doing a little more research, because I don't think our numbers that we, I saw in Nemrick were accurate. So I'm working with Penny and, and Joe on it, but, um, if my numbers are correct, we could be upside down by seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars of revenue versus the operating costs. And the only thing that saved our butt, and I think I showed you, Bob, the other day, was we, we've been underspending the operating budget, but that's because we didn't have all the people up there. So now that we have a full staff, that, that, that money's not gonna be there again. I'm just, I'm concerned about it and, um, and I talked to Mark Shea about it, so, um, we're trying to get some cleanup of numbers, because we, we're, we're dying on recycling right now, we're just, it's killing us. We're getting zero, um, money. And so they're doing some research, because they're, they're two years behind on billing us. And I'm like, do, do they owe us money or do we make money? Anyway, I just wanna let you know that, um, that's, I'm working on that and it's just a concern that, um, going forward. But I will keep you informed of what I find.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I'd like an executive session and it'll take about a minute and a half.
I'm gonna hold you to that.
Yeah.
I'll go two and a half.
So make a motion.
Make a motion, go in an executive session, include the board and the town manager on contracts.
I got nine thirty-seven, close enough.
Nine thirty-eight, yeah, whatever, yep.
You're eight minutes over.
Let me second that.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, we go into executive session with the board and the town manager, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.